Hello.
Good evening, everybody. Um, for the first... Hi. Good evening. For the first council meeting for the year, we actually have a special smoking ceremony. So if anybody is interested in taking part in the smoking ceremony, please follow the mayor and councillors around to the front of the building. You'll be smoked and then come back through and come back in here. Thank you.
I'm thinking about you lately. I thought I'd have a chat with you at some point.
Hello, how are you?
I'm good. How are you?
I've seen that thing up there for a good eight years now.
Is it perfect after you've been to your bank?
That's what I said. I said there's a one point two.
Perfect. You can have it, yeah?
It was almost like the way.
I bet they go in the lobby before it starts coming out.
So they go into the front, right?
They go into the front and they come back in here?
So they're closed this way?
I guess so, yeah. You should be able to now. You should be able to now, yes.
I won't, in case they come back.
Come back down, right, yeah?
Yeah. So they're going to do this from the outside. Are they still going to do something inside? Yes.
Test.
Thank you very much.
Test.
Test, test, check. Uh, thank you for being a part of the, what we call gajal. Gajal is the smoke, the ceremonial smoke. Bundamurri is the fire, the ceremonial fire. Um, my name's Matthew Doyle. I'm a descendant of the Morawari Aboriginal Nation from the northwest of New South Wales. Um, however, I was, I was born here on, uh, I was born on Gadigal land. Um, uh, neighbours to the Bidigal, the land that we're on here. And I grew up, I pretty much grew up on Gadigal land. Um, for the last almost thirty years, I've been, uh, I've lived here in Matreville. So I'm a lot, very much a local as well. My, my family, my kids have grown up here. My wife's family come from Larraparooas as well. Um, so I'd just like to, one, acknowledge we're on Bidigal country. Uh, we pay our respects to our elders, past and present, to the ancestors as well, the knowledge holders, and, uh, to the spirits of this land that are always with us as well. We also acknowledge, um, we acknowledge the waters, uh, the Bidigal and Darawal and the Gweigal people just south of here, over, uh, Kurnell as well, who are also very much an important part of this country. Um, so, yeah, on behalf of the local people, local mob, Bidigal, Gweigal, Darawal, I'd like to welcome you here, uh, this evening. And it's an honour and a pleasure for us to, um, share some, some of our songs and dances with you. The songs and dance that we are performing are all local. They're all sung in local language, uh, either in Darawal or what we call the Sydney language. And the songs talk about everything from welcoming you here to welcoming, uh, Gaora or Buri Buri, the whales on their migration, uh, to, uh, spirit dances, crow dance, uh, lybird dance. And one that some of you probably like doing at some point is fishing, alright? Very important part of the local culture here is fishing and it still is today. So, um, I'll pass it over now to, um, Tim Bishop, who is also a Morawari man, uh, from the same area as my mum, my mother's country. And joining us also is, um, is Mr Brock Tut, who's a Ewan man, but has also grown up here in Matreville as well. So we're all, uh, pretty much local people. So I hope you enjoy it. Start with welcome song.
Oh, Gweigal, hey! Darawal, hey! Gadigal, hey! Bidigal, hey! Kamala! Hong Kong Kamani Al Talin No Rangun. 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 Anya Jamika Chakalani Al. 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 Ooh! Hey! Go in Moba Nora, go in Moba Nora, go in Moba Nora, go in Moba Nora. Go in Moba Nora, go in Moba Nora, go in Moba Nora, go in Moba Nora. Go in Moba Nora, go in Moba Nora, go in Moba Nora, go in Moba Nora. Go in Moba Nora, go in Moba Nora, go in Moba Nora, go in Moba Nora. Ya 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 ya, ya 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 ya. 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 Go in Moba Nora, go in Moba Nora. We're in Moba Nana, we're in Moba Nana. Go in Moba Nora, go in Moba Nora. We're in Moba Nana, we're in Moba Nana. Ya 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 ya, ya 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 ya. 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 Go in Moba Nora, go in Moba Nora. We're in Moba Nana, we're in Moba Nana. Go in Moba Nora, go in Moba Nora. We're in Moba Nana, we're in Moba Nana. Ya 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 ya, ya 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 ya. 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 Ah! Ss, 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 ss. Ai, 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 ay! Woganga, 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 woganga. Woganga, 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 woganga. Wah, 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 wah. Wah, 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 wah. Woganga, 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 woganga. Woganga, 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 woganga. Wah, 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 wah. Wah, 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 wah. Woganga, dangga ra na, woganga, na na bujari. Woganga, dangga ra na, woganga. Woganga, dangga, ra, na, woganga, na, bujari. Wah, 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 wah. Wah, 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 wah. Hey!
Um, this will be the, uh, the fishing dance, as you can see from the fishing spears. Na malabanga, yira, nara, majjaro. Malabanga, yira, nara, majjaro. Na iri mana, mari magura. Na iri mana, mari magura. Malabanga, yira, nara, majjaro. Na malabanga, yira, nara, majjaro. Na iri mana, mari magura. Na iri mana, mari magura. Kamui, magura, magura, kamui. Na malabanga, yira, nara, majjaro. Malabanga, yira, nara, majjaro. Na iri mana, mari magura. Na iri mana, mari magura. Kamui, magura, magura, kamui. Na malabanga, yira, nara, majjaro. Malabanga, yira, nara, majjaro. Na iri mana, mari magura. Na iri mana, mari magura. Kamui, magura, magura, kamui. Na malabanga, yira, nara, majjaro. Na malabanga, yira, nara, majjaro. Na iri mana, mari magura. Na iri mana, mari magura. Kamui, magura, magura, kamui. Kamui, magura, magura, kamui. Hey! Um, this will be our last dance for tonight. This one's called Ruru Jeruben. Uh, this is the dance of the, the lybird. Uh, where Jeruben, dangga, monga, re, bira, tali, daralor. Uh, where Jeruben, dangga, monga, re, bira, tali, daralor. Uh, where Jeruben, dangga, monga, re, bira, tali, daralor. Uh, where Jeruben, dangga, monga, re, bira, tali, daralor. Ah, 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 ah. Hey! Where Jeruben, dangga, monga, re, bira, tali, daralor. Uh, where Jeruben, dangga, monga, re, bira, tali, daralor. Uh, where Jeruben, dangga, monga, re, bira, tali, daralor. Uh, where Jeruben, dangga, monga, re, bira, tali, daralor. Ah, 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 ah. Hey! Where Jeruben, dangga, monga, re, bira, tali, daralor. Uh, where Jeruben, dangga, monga, re, bira, tali, daralor. Uh, where Jeruben, dangga, monga, re, bira, tali, daralor. Uh, where Jeruben, dangga, monga, re, bira, tali, daralor. Ah, 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 ah. Hey! Thank you. Thank you very much.
Uh, thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. I hope you've enjoyed our performance with, uh, of course, uh, enjoyed sharing with you this evening and hope you have a productive evening. Thank you.
Thank, thank you very much. Just before you leave, just before you leave, um, Matt, Tim and Brock, on behalf of all of Randwick City Council, that was a phenomenal welcome and we are very appreciative and we hope it marks what is a very auspicious start to a new term. So thank you very much. Good evening, councillors. Just before, uh, we begin, I might actually, following that, uh, start with an acknowledgement of country and I would like to acknowledge that we are meeting on the land of the Bidigal and Gadigal people who occupy the Sydney coast as being the traditional owners and on behalf of Randwick City Council, uh, I would like to pay my respects to elders past, present, to any Aboriginal people in attendance today. Uh, I will now read the prayer. Almighty God, we humbly beseech you to bestow upon your, uh, us your blessings upon this council and to direct and prosper our deliberations to the advancement of your glory and the true welfare of the people of Randwick and Australia. Amen. Thank you, councillors. I now open the meeting at seven twenty-eight PM. Uh, and before you seat, uh, are seated, I would, uh, just like to begin, uh, with a minute of silence, which I'll start at the end of the statement, acknowledging that in recent days, there have been, uh, some recent tragedies that have occurred, uh, right here, um, along our coastline at Little Bay. Uh, firstly, there was the tragedy on the thirty-first of January, uh, where a ten-year-old Mahan and his father Peter drowned shortly after being swept off the rocks, literally hundreds of metres from here. And then again, another tragedy on the sixteenth of February, where a thirty-five-year-old, Mr Simon Nellist from Waller Creek, lost his life following catastrophic injuries caused by a white shark ocean swimming on the northern side of our beautiful bay. Look, these were terrible tragedies, uh, which shook our community to the core and I would like to, on behalf of Randwick Council, send, uh, thoughts and condolences to the, uh, to the families of these individuals and to pass on that our hearts are with them at this very difficult time. Uh, in addition to that, I would also just like to thank the Randwick Council lifeguards who, uh, on both occasions, uh, were the first responders and went above and beyond anything which could be expected, uh, of them, uh, on behalf of the community and of Randwick City Council. So I would just like to pass on, um, uh, our, our very thanks and also an acknowledgement that this was a very traumatising situation for our staff and a very difficult thing for anyone to face, uh, let alone in, uh, such close succession. So, um, with that, I'd like to hold a minute of silence. Thank you. Councillors, if you could please be seated. I will now call for any apologies or granting of leaves of absences. Are there any apologies? No. Can I have a mover and seconded? There being no apologies, just declare that carried. councillor Hamilton, seconded by councillor Luxford. Okay, can I, uh, now move to the confirmation of the minutes? Uh, firstly, on the ordinary council meeting of the twenty-third of November twenty-twenty-one, can I have a mover, please? Moved by councillor Luxford, seconded by councillor Hamilton. Okay. Now move to the minutes of the extraordinary council meeting on the thirtieth of December twenty-twenty-one. Can I have a mover? Moved Rosenfeld, seconded by councillor Luxford. Okay, thank you. I will now declare both carried. Are there any declarations of pecuniary and non-pecuniary interests? That's a world first. Uh, okay, thank you, councillors. Um, at any time during the debate, if there, uh, yes, I have a declaration from councillor D'Souza.
I might declare a, a, a non-significant pecuniary interest. Rex Madden, who was nominated by you for an award, I through Provis and other groups who have spoken at matters, he's been there, but in saying that it's a non-significant, I'll be waiting on the matter. Thank you, Mr Madden.
Thank you, councillor D'Souza. Councillors, at any point during the debate or any section of the meeting, if you believe, um, or become aware of an interest, uh, please feel free to, uh, come to your feet and interrupt me and I will happily take that, uh, interest. Okay, thank you. Um, we will shortly move to addresses by members of the public, but what I will do is just read the chairperson's announcement, first beginning with a privacy warning. In respect to Privacy and Personal Information Protection Act, members of the public are advised that the proceedings of this meeting will be recorded for the purposes of clause five twenty to five twenty-three of the council's code of meeting practice. Audio/video recordings of meetings are prohibited without the permission of council. A person may be expelled from a meeting for using or having used a video or audio recorder without the express authority of council. Okay, thank you. Now move to, uh, uh, to addresses of council by members of the public and I will call for the first speaker, Mr Carlos De Rocha on MM two slash twenty-two, Rex Madden, recognition for community service.
Uh, can I take this off? Yes. Councillors, um, firstly, thanks for the opportunity to speak, um, especially, um, on behalf of Rex. I'd really like to thank, um, Mr Mayor for the merril minute that you've put forth. I reached out to you, um, at a time that it was too late to get this actually done, um, uh, when we celebrate the honour of, um, you know, the, the Australia Day, where it's all about inclusion, the co- community service custom and, and everything like that. Um, there was a day where I really tried to, um, you know, to, to get this in, but, you know, I left it too late and all of his no, um, reasonings why, you know. First, I was going crazy working with Covid the last two years, then we had the elections, but then finally, you know, where I thought I still had time, um, I ran out and, um, I thought that maybe, you know, um, Mr Mayor, that, you know, this was probably said and done and, you know, um, maybe I might have missed a boat, but then I was really surprised to see your merril minute and it actually just really, um, touched me. Um, it touched me in many sense because, um, this man, um, Rex Madden, um, he's been such a vital community member, um, uh, of our communities, especially around the South Ward and, a- and even near and far for so many years. Um, some of, um, Rex's, you know, um, you know, Rex has been involved with the Malabar Provis Club, he's joined from twenty-third of the eighth, two thousand and five to current. Uh, Member Officer, Vice President and President Ambassador, that's the role he had. Uh, Maruba Bay Combined Provis Club Incorporated, joined twenty-seventh of the fourth, two thousand and six to December two thousand and one. President, Vice President, Outings Officer, um, extensive tours, um, welfare, guest speaker and officer, also Public Officer for Membership and Ambassador. Uh, Maruba Combined Provis Club from two thousand and five to two thousand and eleven and he held various positions. Uh, Maruba Men's Provis Club, joined the twenty-seventh of the tenth, um, to December two thousand and twenty-one. He was the Outings Officer, Membership Officer, Welfare Guest Speaker and Vice President. Botany Bay Computer Pals Students, three years, and then Teacher for Senior. Um, Beginners from two, from two thousand sixteen to December two thousand twenty-one. Vice President and Publics Officer. Rex, amongst all these, um, things that he's done with the Provis Club, was also involved with, um, something that, you know, um, was very important to the South Ward community and that was the Maturville Christmas Carols. I know we have a lot of events throughout the year, um, at Randwick City Council, but the South Ward was in a pretty bad state going back fifteen years ago and we needed some, something vibrant, something fresh, something to bring the community together because you had the Department of Housing, which was regarded as trouble, Bilga Crescent and all that, you had Maturville, which was graffiti and everything that was happening. So my, myself and others, you know, um, it started off a year before I got involved and we had a attendance of about a thousand people. Now, this Maturville Carols grew to seven thousand people at one stage from people from all near and far, not about religion, but about togetherness and inclusiveness. In that time, I was one of the coordinators, but Rex throughout that whole, at least ten to twelve years of this, through his health, his ill health and, a- a- and putting himself to the side, where he's had, you know, some real bad troubles, he's had two heart operations, he's had, um, too many strokes. Recently, he's just, he's got a pacemaker that's in him and he's, on top of all of this, this man still strives to help his community, to do everything he can for others. And I started thinking, not as when I was a councillor, but just as I did before I even became that, sometimes we miss these quiet achievers, we miss these people that actually make us what we become, or they help us to what we become. And, um, Rex, in that sense, he was one of those people by doing the things in the background, by staying on a side, by making himself available, putting his youth a- a- available to help us, dressed up when he had to, whether it was an elf or, or, you know, or a reindeer. This man, beyond any expectation, has gone well above and this, hopefully this award, which I was really hoping that one day we might nominate him and he'd get a medal, you know, but this is something to me so precious and that I think Rex w- w- will be so grateful and I think so will all the communities around us. And just having said that, I just wish also to wish Charles, his wife's in hospital, a good, fast recovery.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr De Rocha. I will now move to the next item, uh, with speakers, CS twenty-two, Laperoo's Headland Toilets Upgrade, Results of Community Consultation, speaking against the matter, Mr Charles Abella.
Thank you for the opportunity. I'll just, uh, start by relating, uh, a true event. At Bullongong, there's a particular toilet block which is situated on, uh, the Bellmore Basin Headland. Now, the headland has a, a lighthouse and it has a loop road around it, very much like, uh, what we have at Laperoo's. As you go into the loop road, instead of seeing the, uh, the ocean, which you expect in the foreshore, you see a great big block of toilets. Very similar to what we have at Laperoo's. Well, what actually happened was about three, four years ago, the Illawarra Mercury ran an article saying that, uh, Bullongong had the worst situated toilet blocks in New South Wales. And it was referring to that particular block. However, a week later, the, the Mercury, uh, retracted that statement, apologised to its leaders, readers, and, uh, said, in fact, the worst toilet block in New South Wales was at Laperoo's. So, uh, from that, I'll, I'll go on to say that as you went to Laperoo's, either walking, it's on the coastal walkway, uh, bike riding, uh, off, getting off the bus, instead of seeing the ocean, the horizon, the two headlands and the national parks, you're confronted, you're confronted with the toilet block. Uh, it, it just couldn't be in a worse position visually and has a really devastating effect on the, uh, sense of, uh, arrival, uh, at Laperoo's. Uh, another point of concern is the cost of the toilet. Uh, I noted in the report that, uh, an additional half a billion dollars is, uh, requested, but it doesn't state the full cost of the toilet block, of the proposed toilet block. Going at the half a million dollars is for the recent increase in building costs of about twenty percent. Therefore, the full cost is at least two and a half million dollars, uh, probably more. And what do we get for that? One extra cubicle. Uh, it, it's just, just mind-boggling. Uh, I'd also like to point out, there's local rejection of the proposed, uh, uh, design and situation. Uh, the precinct committee has, uh, it's the Basin Beaches Precinct Committee, of which I'm co-chair, has, uh, considered the proposal and has rejected it as being, uh, an unsuitable location because it would perpetuate a bad situation. Now, uh, a, a better solution would be to place it lower in front, but I realise that, uh, there may be, uh, access, disability access, uh, problems with putting it underground.
Mr Abella, I grant you a one-minute extension.
Thank you. Uh, however, the, um, there is a toilet block, as people get off the bus, there, there's a toilet block there that belongs to State Transit and it would be eminently suitable to put the public toilet block on the back of those. Uh, I, I know State Transit has been approached and has refused, but however, uh, I, I think, uh, if I can be bold to say, with a change in government, maybe they, they could be more, uh, more accommodating. That's what I, well, I'd like to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr Abella. Is there any questions of the gentleman? Thank you very much, Mr. Abella. Is there any questions of the gentleman, councillor D'Souza?
Mr. Abella, how long have you lived in La Perouse?
Yeah, I've lived at La Perouse fifty-three years. And I've been active in community development of the area, of its facilities and its beauty. I've been chair of the La Perouse Precinct Committee for twenty years. And I'm currently a co-chair of the Basin Beaches. So I fully know what the local sentiment is and the contempt that that toilet block has been held for all the time that I've known. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Abella. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to find out the time span, which is clear, that this is a very experienced resident who wants to make a difference.
Thank you, councillor D'Souza. Mr. Abella, in light of you speaking on the next item, feel free to stand, to remain there. We now move to N M one slash twenty-two. Notice of motion from councillor D'Souza, shortage of parking at La Perouse on weekends, speaking against Mr. Abella. Mr. Abella?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I had a question for the speaker.
Oh, yes, you have a question for the speaker? That's fine. On which item? C S, La Perouse Headland and Toilets? Okay, thank you. Mr. Abella, as it relates to the Headland and Toilets, councillor Beech has a question for you.
Thank you very much for coming and speaking. Obviously, those toilets are in really bad need of an updating, but there were obviously quite a few concerns expressed as a result of the community consultation. Other than moving it to probably a difficult location, though I understand the reasoning, I mean, was there any other feedback that you're getting from the community that you could add to what you've already said? Because I'm genuinely interested to know, try and come to some kind of resolution.
Yeah, I guess.
Thank you.
The feedback is to leave them as they are or maybe bag them and make them a sandstone sort of colouring to it, to lessen the visual effects. As far as providing an extra cubicle for disabled people, that would be best done at the toilets that currently exist on the beach at Frenchman's Beach. Because people coming out of the restaurants needing a toilet would have to walk uphill to the Kongrong ones, but would be walking downhill to the Frenchman's Bay toilets. And they also wouldn't be challenged by crossing the road there at the roundabout. It's much easier to cross down the bottom. So I would think that the disabled cubicles should be placed in those toilets, an extra disabled cubicle, if there is one there already.
Thank you. Are there any further questions? There being no further questions. Mr. Abella, if you could just stay there, we will move to the next item, which is La Perouse Parking Arrangements Proposed by councillor D'Souza, and I believe you're speaking against. Feel free to begin.
Yes. Councillor D'Souza has very good intentions in helping the residents with their problems. However, increased parking at La Perouse will actually increase the problems for the residents. Because what the problem is there is the traffic congestion and also the noise that the horn element of that traffic generates and either through bypass mufflers at high revs or backfiring, which they deliberately do. Now, if you increase the parking, what will happen is that you'll increase the traffic because there'll be a higher expectation of people finding parking, but which they won't because the parking spaces on a hot day would fill very quickly. The extra ones just would fill within seconds. As a matter of fact, if you bulldoze the whole lot of La Perouse, I would say that would, because of that inflow of traffic, the whole area would fill within minutes. So on a hot day, increased parking, it just makes things worse. Now, the parking during winter on weekdays and on weekend days, even when it's not conducive to going to the beach, is quite adequate. So there isn't a need as far as the businesses go or anything else. They do a roaring trade on hot days anyway. Now, in regard to the traffic, the real problem is the demand for beachgoers to get a parking place. Now, beachgoers will have to be, well, or can be, trying to park further away and catch the bus in. There's a bus every ten minutes or so. And also council may consider putting up signs on the highway like they do for the Cronulla Beach and the orderly National Park, saying that Cronulla's closed or the National Park is closed. That may lessen the demand and consequently the traffic. In relation to the noise problem, I've read recent articles, which I can provide, that France is actually using, now using cameras which identify noisy cars and records their registration details, which they provide to the police for action. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Abella. Councilors, are there any questions? Councillor D'Souza?
Thank you, Mr. Abella. Mr. Abella, I just wanted to make it, maybe you read this differently. I haven't asked for an increase, I've asked for a review and to see how we can improve things. That's what one does as a leader of the community. But then, you know, that's why I asked in the earlier question, how long? You are one of the elders, one of the statesmen of our area, and your views are most respected. But you must also keep in mind the future. And I'm the mayor that signed the museum over, La Perouse Museum, to Randwick's care. Randwick City will be investing five million dollars in its upgrade and bringing it up to scratch. With that will come increased need for parking, with that will come visitors. So we need to look further, but that's the reason I've asked for a review. And I fully agree with you that, yes, at the moment, and if we keep encouraging, but we as a community must allow La Perouse to become like Coogee and other rear vision writing. Sorry?
So councillor D'Souza.
The question?
Councillor Nielsen has, through the chair, just requested you to wrap up your question if possible.
So my question was, right, my question is about the parking. You're of the view that there's enough there or do you look into the, looking in the rear view mirror, yes, there might be enough there. But in looking in a forward, looking forward, do you believe that we should consider reviewing the parking there, that the museum is now coming of age? That's what's going to be my question. Thank you, councillor Nielsen.
Can I respond to that? Yeah, in regard to the weekends, any extra parking won't have any effect on the problems. In regard to when it's not beach weather, at the moment, there is adequate parking. However, I fully agree that maybe it should be reviewed for future, for the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If there are no further questions, thank you very much, Mr. Abella. We now move to N M seven slash twenty-two. Notice of motion from councillor Burst, no more incinerator flags to raise community awareness. Mr. Hanson?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and councillors, for the opportunity to speak tonight. I will be speaking for councillor Burst's motion for some additional support in the way of flags for No More Incinerators campaign. But just before I do, I would like to acknowledge and thank council for the support shown to the campaign so far in the fees that have been waived for our current beachside information stalls, which we're holding on rolling each consecutive Sunday. Council has very generously waived the fees associated with the open space permits for those information stalls and certainly the team at No More Incinerators is very grateful. We'd also like to acknowledge council's waiving of the fees for our information stall, which we're going to be holding at the Spot Festival in March, which is a big help to us as well. So a heartfelt thanks from the team at No More Incinerators. In terms of councillor Burst's proposal to provide some additional flags or flags and additional support for No More Incinerators, I'd like to stress the importance of that gesture. Because the overriding feedback we are getting from members of the public that are approaching us at our beachside information stalls is, oh, I thought that was all finished now. And I know that there is a draft regulation which looks promising. And I know that some of the posters have come down, but I can't stress enough that it's not over until Suez actually withdraws their proposal. And so the plea I would make for councillors tonight is that please continue supporting the campaign because we do not want a situation where we think it's going to be okay when we know in fact that the New South Wales EPA is, in their words, actively engaging with Suez and Opal. And we believe Suez is trying to find a way around the draft legislation, which has currently been put up on the EPA website for review. We know that Suez has a similar arrangement with Opal in Maryvale in Victoria, and they are desperate to get a foothold into New South Wales. And it is highly likely that Suez will be saying to the EPA, look, ours is only a hundred and sixty-five thousand tonnes a year, not like those nasty big incinerators over in Western Sydney, which are still on the books. So ours will be okay, we're only going to be burning dry waste and we'll make sure there's no plastic in it and everything will be okay. Having worked in the plastics industry for twelve years, I can tell you now that it is impossible to separate different types of plastic in a waste stream. We've all seen photos and
Mr. Hanson, I'll give you a one-minute extension.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've all seen photos and footage on the TV where we have a waste stream moving through on a conveyor belt. And to date, no technology is able to separate chlorinated plastics such as PVC from polyethylene plastics or PET, which is our soft drink bottles. So I would ask council to please keep supporting our campaign. We'll keep working hard, but we need your support. Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question from councillor Rosenfield and then councillor Burst.
Yes, Chris, as you know, I fully support your campaign. I was just going to ask, has Suez actually put in a DA as yet? Because I had some correspondence with the previous planning minister and at the time, Suez hadn't put in the DA. But that was back in December. Has anything progressed on that?
So what Suez have actually done is they've actually submitted a proposal to the Department of Planning. They've been issued what they call SEAS, which is the Secretary's Environmental Requirements for the EIS. They've prepared the EIS and they're holding. So the DA effectively is their application to the Department of Planning. They've got been granted state significant status, which means that bypass is unfortunately counsel. And this is why we're so strident in getting people to object directly to the minister, both Ministers Keane and Stokes. So it is still very much on foot.
Thank you, councillor Burst.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Firstly, I'd like to thank you for all the efforts you've put in so far for this campaign, the way you've educated our community of the negative sides and why we need to forget about yesterday's technology and look at the future. So I very appreciate that. The motion will also include banners as well, so, but I will hopefully get support from my councillors, fellow councillors, and we can help. So thank you. Keep up the good work.
Thank you very much.
Councillors, I would just remind everyone for this section that substantive comments should be left to the debate and this is just left for questioning. Councillor D'Souza?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chris, I organised for you two meetings, one both with the minister and his team and the EPA. The question is, after those two meetings, which appear to be very productive, are you feeling a bit more confident that maybe we put this to rest?
Look, as a engineer and been on the other side of the fence where I've been building these types of projects, I'd like to say that I'm cautiously optimistic, but legally and in the realistic view is that it is not over until that proposal is withdrawn. Yes, it looks promising, but I just can't stress enough, please, please don't think, oh, there's a clause in the draft legislation, everything will be all right. It's the worst thing we could do right now.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. There being no further questions, I will now move to N M nine slash twenty-two. Notice of motion from the deputy mayor, councillor Chapel, equal pay for equal play. I now call Ms. Lucy Small.
In April last year, I won a surf contest in Sydney and when they awarded the prize money, my cheque was less than half of the men's prize money for surfing the same waves on the same day. Women's sport and women athletes have long been relegated to the peripheries of sporting arenas, not only in terms of prize money, but in terms of opportunity and access. Access to facilities and opportunities to train and compete. I've heard many stories about this. For example, right here in Randwick, at Coogee Oval, the women's rugby team is forced to play on other ovals because Randwick Rugby Club want their main field, they want to save their main field from being damaged for the men's team. In two thousand and twenty-three, Australia will host the Women's Soccer World Cup, where we will have the opportunity to watch Australia's most loved team, the Matildas, compete here at home for just seven percent of the prize money awarded at the Men's Soccer World Cup. Women's sport is growing. In Australia, sorry, in the recent Australian Open Tennis Final, the women's final had one point five million more people tune in to watch than the men's singles final and one point three million more than the men's doubles final. The AFLW saw its one millionth spectator pass through its gates in January while their teams are still playing in the middle of summer on obscure grounds with little to no media coverage and while the average gender pay gap in AFL is three hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. At a grassroots level, community sport is not about media figures and advertising value. At the contest I won in Sydney, there was no broadcast. Community sport is about the wellbeing of our communities and our young people, not about commercial viability, which among many other things is why change needs to happen in local government. The huge community and media response to my speech calling out the organisers of the surf competition for their unequal prize money showed me there is an appetite for this change and that it is already happening. Government can either lead the way or scramble to catch up. Our campaign, Equal Pay for Equal Play New South Wales, is calling for gender equal policies to be made, a requirement for sports clubs and organisations to receive government funding. For me, at the heart of this issue is the fact that right now, if you have two children, a boy and a girl, and they love sport, you need to find a way to tell your son that he can grow up to chase his dreams of being a professional athlete and also tell your daughter that the chances of her doing that are very, very slim. In fact, just one in ten professional athletes worldwide are women. You need to tell your daughter that the reason your local cricket club may not have a girls' team is because someone out there has decided that sport for girls isn't commercially viable. Australians love sport, we all know that, and gender should in no circumstance be a barrier for us, for all to do what we love.
Thank you. I have a question from councillor Chapel.
Thanks, Lucy. That was great. Can I just ask if you could tell us a bit about the position of some of the surfing bodies on this issue? Because I know that it's been a live subject of discussion in recent years.
Thanks, Kim. Yeah, so Surfing New South Wales. Yeah, so Surfing New South Wales has, last year after I called out the unequal prize money and there was a media kind of response to it, they updated their rulebook to say that all affiliated clubs and organisations need to have equal prize money. There's also been big investment in the last 12 months into the Her Wave Programme, which is like a proactive approach to increasing participation and pathways in the industry. And then at a global level, the International Governing Body of Professional Surfing is they have equal prize money at all levels of competition too.
Thank you. Are there any further questions? There being no further questions, thank you very much. I'll now move on to NM 14/22 Notice of Motion from councillor Nielsen, Council to Do More to Ensure the Protection of Native Fauna in the City of Randwick, speaking for Ms Belinda Head.
Thank you for the opportunity to talk to council about the importance of an education strategy aimed to protect our native fauna in our local area. My name's Belinda, I'm a primary school teacher and a Wires volunteer. I have been a primary school teacher for over 25 years now and a Wires volunteer for more than three years. I've always been an animal lover and I've been very fortunate enough to grow up living with cats and dogs my whole life. The grim reality of the negative impact that dogs and cats have on our local wildlife did not strike me until I actually started to volunteer for Wires. Whilst most pet owners are usually animal lovers who aim to be responsible, unfortunately, education linked to responsible pet ownership falls short of what is needed. Can we go to the next slide, please? Cat and dog attacks are among the most common reasons for the rescue of birds, mammals and reptiles in the eastern suburbs. Last year, 970 rescuers were undertaken by Wires volunteers in Randwick council alone. Of the animals we know of that were euthanised or died, at least 30% of them were from cat or dog attacks. We feel that actual numbers could be much higher as they don't capture data from deceased native animals who do not get called in. It also doesn't capture data from other wildlife organisations and doesn't factor in potential reasons why orphaned baby animals come in to care. To compound this unavoidable heartbreak, the owners of pets are usually deeply distressed to know that their animal has created serious injury or death to native animals. Of the 220 animals I have done, almost half of them have been due to dog or cat attacks. Knowing I'm powerless to reverse the attack is extremely heartbreaking, however, it's equally hard to watch the remorse of a pet owner. Statements like, I had no idea my dog could do that, I wish I'd kept my cat in, I wish I had have known all of this are all too common. And for wildlife rescuers and vets, it feels like Groundhog Day. I'm sure you'd agree, as a community, we need to start being proactive rather than reactive. Community-based education programmes designed to share the facts about what could happen if their cats roam or if their dog is off a leash are really important. And through discussions with members of the public and other organisations, it's very clear that honest and consistent information is what they seek. Can I go to the next slide, please? Most cat owners are not aware that the bacteria from cats is deadly to both birds and possums. For younger animals, it only takes a small scratch to cause deadly poisoning. Whilst the effect of poison can potentially be reversed through an injection of antibiotics by a vet, often it's too late for the animal to be treated and necrosis has already set in.
Grant you a one-minute extension.
Thank you. On average, cat attacks of 110 animals include birds, reptiles and animals. And like most of you, growing up in the eastern suburbs, I'm sure you remember seeing blue-tongued lizards as kids. Now we never see them anymore and we need to ask ourselves what has created this situation and what can be done to stop it from happening. Sadly, this isn't going to go away and at the end of the day, cats and dogs are blameless, they're just doing what their instincts tell them. As a community, we need to take ownership and we need to step up for our native wildlife. Other states and councils have started forging forward by developing containment policies and education programmes. Working to resolve this problem will be a process and I'm sure you would agree, it's a process worth endorsing and one we need to start now and one we need to do together. Thank you.
Thank you. Before you return to your seat, councillor Pandafini, you have a question.
Thanks so much for coming in. When you say containment policies, what do you mean by that?
There are other states, the ACT, that are looking at keeping cats contained in at night time so owners won't be allowed to let their animals roam free as a measure to stop the cats from going out and attacking native wildlife while a lot of our animals are out during the evening.
Thank you. Follow-up?
Yeah, I've just got a follow-up. And what kind of education programmes do you think that we could start looking into?
That's a really good question and that's something that I know a lot of organisations would be happy to work with council on. Recently, we've had several swans that have been attacked at St Temiel Park with dogs off leash and they've gone into the ponds and they've actually killed two male swans. There are signs up around the area saying that it's not an off-leash area, however, that hasn't been enough. So an education programme is something that would have to draw from different sources and would look to target pet owners, non-pet owners, children. Being a teacher myself, I know that kids are really passionate about the environment too and I think that that's a really positive way to move forward as well.
Thank you, councillor Nielsen, I have seen you, but I'll go first to councillor Nielsen, then to councillor D'Souza, then councillor Burst.
Thank you very much for coming in and of course, big thank you to you and all your fellow Wires people for that fantastic work that you do. I think it was very interesting, the point that you made about pet owners often don't realise what has happened and they're traumatised. And I think that is something that you and other workers would perhaps be able to help us in the education campaign. And maybe you could just speak a little bit more about that, please?
Yeah, I don't know where the gaps in education actually sit and I agree speaking to you, speaking with pet owners about where those gaps are and how they can be filled would be very useful as well. Also thinking about different modes of education. I know unfortunately, I have several conversations with members of the public after the fact once a possum, I mainly do possums, so once a possum has been severely attacked, I know that they then speak to other people and then the word is passed on that way. So I guess we need to think of a programme where we don't need to have the actual impact of the death to create the conversation, but we need to be able to have a platform to create the conversation and the interest so that we're preventing the injuries that are happening.
Thank you. Councillor D'Souza. Councillor D'Souza, you can turn your microphone on.
On. Thank you, Mr Mayor. You reminded me when we met outside that you were a chiefly public school and I was the chair of the school committee when Helen Jackson was there. But the point, the question I make to you, and I'm being scientific here, you know, I'm a scientist. So when we talk about Darwin's Origin of Species, he talks about evolution and survival of the fittest. And I'm supporting you, don't worry. But my question to you is, are we interfering with evolution when we, you know, use practices such as what you're advocating? We're doing it with good intention, but are we interfering with nature and evolution? That was my question.
And I think that that question can be answered by asking, what impact are we having on evolution? So our native wildlife is doing it extremely tough, especially in our eastern suburbs areas, because we are taking away a lot of their habitat. So if it was an equal playing field and we're letting evolution play out, maybe so, but at the moment, it's not. We just need to look at trees being cut down, that's impacting where birds can nest, where possums can roost. Our bushes are being removed, our lizards are then being exposed as well. And I feel cats being out at night time or dogs being off leash, that's not normal behaviour either. Like they're not in their natural environment, hunting to reduce numbers or anything like that.
Thank you for that. That's great.
Thank you. Councillor Burst.
Thank you for coming in, Belinda. Belinda, you've done a great job in educating both of my sons, so I'm confident that you'll do a great job in educating our community. So thank you, Belinda.
Thank you.
Councillors, thank you. I'll now move on to the next item, but a very gentle reminder that this section needs to contain questions only, there'll be substantive debate on motions and you can make your comments at that particular point. We now move to NM 13/22 Notice of Motion from councillor Nielsen, Heritage Protection for the Building Known as 11A Marcel Avenue, Coogee. I now call Mr Simon Fontaine.
Mayor, councillors, thank you for the opportunity to present to you tonight. My wife and I, Petra Fontaine and myself, have resided in the local government area of Randwick for more than 30 years. We live at number 15 Marcel Avenue. I wish to read a report commissioned by ourselves from two heritage experts. One is Professor Richard Mackay, AM, and the other one is a local heritage expert, Ruth Daniel. In that report, they state, the Moira Crescent Heritage Conservation Area includes the following statements relating to heritage values. Two or three-storey interwar flat buildings in bungalow-inspired style. And I note the first picture of the subject development. Next slide, please. Red or liver-coloured face brickwork. You won't see it from there, but this one has Doric columns and it also has original terrazzo, which you might be able to see there, concrete details. Next slide. Original LED light stained glass windows. Next slide, please. Next slide after that, thank you. Red terracotta roof tile, which I'm not sure if we have a photo of that, but it does. Next slide. There you can see it. Slide after that, please. And in addition, this building at 11A is highly intact with features in the internal units which represent a fine example of interwar bungalow architecture, including original interior joinery, as you can see. Next slide. And pressed ceilings. Next slide, please. This current property is subject to a DA for-
I grant you a minute extension.
-for demolition. We're very concerned that the current owners are planning to potentially damage this property and we support councillor Nielsen's motion for an urgent interim heritage order pending a full assessment by council. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillors, are there any questions of the gentleman? Councillor Rosenfield.
Yes, so I was just going to ask, what is the proposed new building that the developer is looking to replace this building with?
There is no proposed DA.
Oh, okay.
It's just a demolition DA. It's very unusual.
Yeah, so demolition and that's it, there's nothing proposed to take-
I would say the council may or may not be aware that one of the units has been condemned. Other than that, there's no other DA.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further, I have a question first from councillor Hamilton and then councillor Nielsen.
Thank you, Mr Fontaine. You just mentioned then that one of the units is, what is it? It's unlivable, is it? Has it been damaged in some way and is irreparable? Do you know that?
I know there is a water aquifer that runs along the entire escarpment on the southern side of Marcel Avenue and there is a very large volume of water that runs down that escarpment and this property is subject to water issues and has been inundated and has been deemed unfit for habitation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Nielsen.
I just wanted to, oh, thank you very much for coming in, Mr Fontaine, and also for the excellent work that you have done in terms of the information that you have gathered in support of the interim heritage conservation order and hopefully a permanent conservation order on this particular building. And as far as you know, all the flats apart from the one that you say has got water damage are all in as good condition perhaps as the one that you have been showing us the interior of? Or the others two as good? Because there are only four flats in the building, aren't there?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yes, they're all intact. To my knowledge, some of them have had, you know, various developments done, modernisations, but the joinery, the serries, the heritage values internally are intact.
The other point that you made in regard to the water damage to the flat, that actually is a potential fear for any neighbour in terms of what might happen with a demolition, am I right?
Correct. However, that's obviously a separate issue. There are many issues relating to this particular proposal, which we outlined, the community's outlined in their objections, there was more than 20 objections. And one of them is obviously the impact of the water, there's the impact of landslide and there's the impact on the actual streetscape by potentially demolishing this. It would interfere with the heritage conservation streetscape, which I note Professor Mackay makes particular reference to in his report where he says that the demolition of this report, of this property, would impact the existing heritage conservation area, which is on page three of his report. There is a clear evidence that demolition would adversely affect the settings of the heritage conservation area. This is because irrespective of any change to the boundary of the HCA, the section of Marcel Avenue immediately to the west of its intersection with Moira Crescent features urban form, streetscape and particularly interwar buildings that are historically and visually consistent with the conservation area. Therefore, the demolition of 11A Marcel Avenue would have a negative impact on the setting and runs contrary to clause 5.10.5 of the Randwick LEP, which states that the consent authority may before granting must require heritage management document to be prepared to the extent to which the carrying out of any proposed development would affect the heritage significance of any heritage item or any heritage conservation area concerned.
I think the learner professor makes some very good points and thank you for telling us that.
Thank you. If there are no further questions, thank you. We will now move to the next item, NM 16/22 Notice of Motion from councillor Beech, Support for Asylum Seekers. I call Mr Philip Feinstein.
Good evening, thank you for the opportunity. My name is Philip Feinstein, I represent an organisation called Music for Refugees. Music helps people, refugees who have a lot of stress and I go to Vellwood Detention Centre every week. It's closed now. of stress, and I go to Vellwood Detention Centre every week. It's closed now, of course, because of COVID, but I've been doing this for the last 15 years to try and help the refugees deal with their stress. So just a bit of history about Vellwood. There's approximately 450 people there, of which 285 of them are not refugees. They are actually on 501 visas. These are people who are foreign nationals who have committed a crime, and they're going to be deported, but they're inside Vellwood because they're fighting the deportation order. There are no children in any refugee centres in Australia. Refugees inside these detention centres, they are required to live with these ex-criminals. That's stressful in itself. There are refugees inside who have been there for up to 10 years. Some of them came here when they were still in their teens. The living quarters are very, very cramped, and visitors do go into the detention centres, and they try and bring various gifts for them, but the one thing they're not allowed to bring, believe it or not, is food unless it's prepackaged. So refugees inside the detention centres, they have a lot of stress due to a lot of reasons: family separation, loss of dignity, isolation, loneliness. There's no hope for them in the future, fear of deportation. They're also called illegals, and I don't know why they're called illegals, because it's quite legal to be a refugee. And the accusation about the children overboard thing, which we all know about, that was not true, but they're still living with that. Refugees have fears of being transferred from one detention centre to another, and very often that just happens overnight. They're not even told it's going to happen. A lot of refugees have had suicide attempts. A lot of refugees would be stitching their lips and also having self-mutilation in order to get attention. As far as COVID is concerned, it's very difficult to isolate. Vellwood is a good example. There's one section they call Blacksland, which they can isolate there, but Blacksland is a hellhole, I can tell you that. At the moment, there's no public or church visitors allowed into Vellwood, no outside music teachers or music jams. This has been for the last couple of years. They're also given very, very little notice when relocating. In other words, they don't have time to contact their lawyers. There's absolutely no certainty for their future. You can imagine living under these circumstances. A lot of them have got no passport because that was confiscated by the people smugglers when they came over, so it's very hard for them to prove their history to the government. There's a new thing now that there are drugs coming into Vellwood Detention Centre. In fact, there's even a report out that one of the Serco officers was even caught bringing drugs in.
I grant you a one-minute extension.
Okay. Some of the refugees are very, very highly qualified. They can benefit Australia. Now, this is also about refugees in the community, and inside the community, a lot of them do not have any medical available to them, no accommodation, no transport, no allowances to work, no free education, no legal assistance. And fortunately, there's a couple of organisations in the community who help them, like the Asylum Seeker Centre and STARS, and the Refugee Council of Australia. So basically speaking, the refugees, whether they are inside, in captivity, which is what it is, or whether they're outside, their stress levels are very, very high, and councillor Beach has put forward a lot of very, very positive ideas and positive statements to try and help these refugees. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Councillor Beach.
Thank you very much for coming in and for sharing your experiences. Not many of us get an opportunity to go and see what's actually going on. It's not reported very much. What would be the benefit of allowing these asylum seekers to actually be released from detention and to at least await, if they hopefully get a positive outcome, but if nothing else, await the outcome of their determination on their status in the community as opposed to within detention?
Well, one thing which a lot of people don't even think... Sorry?
You know, I guess an argument would be that it's not safe for them to be in the community. Is that something that you would agree or disagree with?
They'd be perfectly safe in the community. I mean, when I go to Vellwood, people have actually said to me, "Are you fearful when you go in there?" And I can tell you, it's one of the safest places around. People who live near, in Malabar, next to the jail over here, that's also one of the safest places to live, because if someone escapes from Long Bay Jail, the first thing they want to do is get out the area. But putting that aside, the refugees, you know, once they're in our society, these are decent people. And these are people, you know, who have come to Australia under very difficult circumstances, whether it be on a boat, putting their own lives at stake, or trying to get there because of the problems in their original country. They are coming over here with good intention. Why would they suddenly want to be against us Aussies? Now, these are people, and a lot of them, by the way, are very, very highly qualified people as well. They will do a lot of good things for Australia. So I believe, in answer to your question, yeah, let them live amongst the community, keep control over it, but let them be in the community. And one other point, too, which a lot of people don't realise, the cost of keeping people imprisoned like this is enormous. It costs us millions, billions of dollars, and we'd be saving that money. So I believe very strongly that refugees, it's best for them to be out of detention, not in detention.
Thank you very much, Mr Feinstein. There is a question from councillor De Souza.
Sorry, Philip, Mr Feinstein. I just, if you could explain, because there seemed to be a bit of overlap with regards refugees and asylum seekers. So what is the difference between the two? I mean, I think I know, but you seem to have put them both in the same basket.
Yep. I put them both in the same basket because this is all about stress, whether you be a refugee or whether you be an asylum seeker. You know, your future is very much unknown. And also, a lot of people, they actually do get visas, and there's different types of visas that they get, and some of the visas are very, very restrictive. Some visas don't allow them to work. Some visas don't allow them to even have one of those little cards to get on buses. So, you know, our governments put different standards on these refugees and these asylum seekers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I now move to NM 17/22, notice of motion from councillor Beach, reduced dumping rubbish and waste of landfill in the Randwick LGA. Ms Gail Parsons, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, councillors. My name is Gail. I've lived in my apartment block for 22 years, and it's at number 20 Boronia Street, Kensington. It is alongside of ES Marks Athletic Field, just to give you some coordinates. I've also owned and lived in four other properties, born and bred in Randwick. So councillor De Souza, I don't want to tell you my age, but I'm much older than what's been said here before. Probably, I'd have to be a bit older than you, I think. So I've got credentials. I've got credentials. Why I'm saying that is I'm not a blow-in, so I know the location and I know Randwick council, the good and the bad of it. There's been an increase in dumping of rubbish. I have noticed it in my location over the last five years, and in particular, the last two or three years. And it's becoming totally critical. The items that are put out are collected through all sorts of means, and I can document this. It's been documented by evidence, photographic evidence with date and time, that rubbish appears within 48 hours after it'd already been cleared. One item that's placed is like a petri dish, and more of it grows. People come along and just dump on it. And a particular item, a location at number 22 Boronia Street, Kensington, is a known site, and I have seen people pull up in their cars and dump rubbish. I have challenged them, but I do it very carefully. I've also looked at why. Why here? Why at this location? Why not up the street, down the street, or across the road? And my observation is that there is a brick wall and there is dirt and a tree. And it invites people to put an item and leave an item. So I believe the motion that has been put forward, one of the really important factors is that a suitable sign with encouragement by you, the council, to the owner of block 22, and that is a company-owned property, not a strata property, that you have it installed on their brick fence, and appropriate cost-effective landscaping be put in that area as a deterrent for people to just dump stuff there, along with all the other strategies that have been put forward on the motion here tonight. I'd also like to obviously bring to your attention that the biggest problem is coming up with a suitable solution as to where people can properly dispose of their unwanted household items. And I'm talking about the broken chairs, the empty buckets, the TV packing boxes that affect us all. I'm sure with the...
I grant you a one-minute extension.
Thank you. I'm sure with the intellect in this room that we can come up with suitable locations for people to take their unwanted items and for collection and control by the council. If you ask any resident, do they know where to take their household broken items and associated items? They do not know. I hope that you adopt this motion tonight, as I'm sure if rubbish and dumped items were placed in front of your own home, you would not tolerate it.
Thank you. There's a question from councillor Beach.
Thank you, Gail, for coming in. Obviously, we've been in touch quite a bit over the last couple of years. It's quite a lot of work on your part just sort of documenting all this, but could you explain to the councillors just what the impact is on you personally and perhaps for some of the other residents living in your block, to actually constantly be confronted with this sort of dumped rubbish all the time?
Well, apart from it being absolutely disheartening, I mean, I'm absolutely on speed dial with the, what is it, snap, send, solve. I'm on them twice a week. It's embarrassing. Sometimes I can't walk up and down the footpath, because all the items overflow up against this brick dirt patch, actually onto the footpath, that you can't actually walk up and down the footpath. All sorts of unsavoury people come and rummage through it or put things there in the dead of night. And the degrading of the property values, the degrading of the standard of the neighbourhood, we're looking like a ghetto. And I'm sure none of you in Randwick council want to be identified as a ghetto area. And I can assure you, that's what it looks like. I drive around Redfern, without disparaging Redfern, and they are pristine. The streetscaping around certain areas, in my particular area, my patch of Boronia Street, you would not tolerate it.
Thank you. Thank you. Councillors, there being no further questions. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Apologies if there was a bit of passion.
That's all right.
Thank you.
More than forgiven. Having now dealt with addresses of the public, I will move to the items which we've had speakers on. The first one is MM 2/22, Mr Rex Madden, recognition for community service. Just on behalf of the whole council, I'd like to thank former councillor De Rocha for bringing this to my attention. I think he gave an excellent exposition as to why Mr Madden is a suitable recipient of some form of community recognition. As such, I mean, I note his contribution to Provis, Guide Dogs, as well as Maturville Carols. And in some of the documentation which was provided to me, Mr Madden was compared and described as a tireless worker, a vital helper, a pillar of strength, and a worthy recipient of community recognition. So, look, thank you very much, Mr Madden, for your award, and I commend this mayoral minute to the floor. Thank you, councillors. Councillor De Souza.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I had a note in front of me which said, "Rex Madden, a living angel." But Rex Madden, I know, is a living devil. No, not at all. Rex, I must say, over the years, I've known you for a long time. You always inspired me and others by what you did, not just at Provis, but the hope you gave the elderly residents in our area. You showed them how life can be more than just staying home and watching days of our lives or something like that. You got them out there. You were the man who would organise those trips. You know, Rex, some people see problems and they ask, "Why? Why is this happening?" You, Rex, when you saw a problem, you said, "Why not? Why not we do something about it? Why not we improve the quality of life for the elderly? We can do better." And for that alone, you deserve an Order of Australia recognition. But I'm very happy that the start of the process has begun. You're a very humble, decent, and good man. And it's people like you and others like you that should be recognised. Mr Mayor, you have my full support on this one. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor De Souza. There are no further speakers. I would just like to commend the mayoral minute, and I'll now call for a vote on it. All those in favour? All those against? I declare that carried. And just with an indulgence of the meeting, I'll just present Mr Madden. Thank you. Just one second. Thank you very much, councillors. We now move to the next item, which has had speakers, CS/22, Lapparoo's Headland Toilet Upgrade, results of community consultation. Do I have a mover? Okay. Do I have a mover of CS/22 to 222? Lapparoo's Headland Toilets Upgrade. Councillor Luxford actually is moving it. Do I have a second of the report? Can I get a clarification as to what you're moving, councillor Luxford? As per the recommendation. Councillor Hamilton, do you second it? Do we have a second there for the report on the business paper? Okay, without a second, it's now lapsed. I'll call councillor Sed to move it.
Just move it in amended fashion, Mr Mayor. Because I was listening to Mr Abella, and I actually tend to agree that it probably is in the wrong spot, and I realise that we have put a lot of work into this, and I realise that it could be very expensive to put it into ideas into the cliff, which I don't agree with. But at the same time, I remember when we were building the Yarboroughs memorial, that we were going to build it on that site behind the bus stop, and I totally agree that it's obviously plumbing there because there is a bathroom there. So I would like to, as amended fashion, to actually bring back a report without... that if it is possible to actually do a deal or to discuss it with, we probably have, but just in case we haven't, the Department of Transport, we were open to a 99-year lease, and to see if that offer still stands. And if it does, I think that right next to the bus stop there would be the most appropriate sort of place to put it. It is in the wrong spot. Obviously, at the top of the stairs, when you come off the beach, it would be good to have a shower and somewhere to wash your feet and have a bubbler for fresh water. But the actual toilets are in the most appropriate, disappropriate spot. It is a lot of expense to go to just... It is a lot of expense to go to just to build the extra toilet. So, and it's very flat and it's very easy to get to. So if we can put it across the road, it'd be terrific. But I know we have to investigate that site. So as an amended fashion, I'd say that if we can investigate going across the road towards that bus stop.
Thank you. Mr Burst, are you seconding that? Turn on your microphone.
No power.
Sorry. Just for the benefit of the meeting for the new councillors, what occurred there is councillor Sed hadn't turned off his microphone, which meant that the other microphones weren't gone. Councillor Burst is a seconder of the motion.
I think we need to, I agree with councillor Sed. And hearing the feedback from one of our statesmen in our community, it's pretty obvious we need to do something about it. I think we need to ensure that we've got more facilities, more toilets, more showers. If we're going to, Laparoo's is a heritage site and it's one of our, visitors come out to Randwick City Council and come out to Laparoo's because of its heritage value. So I think we need to put our best foot forward and show an amenity that is appropriate for the area. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor De Souza.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. As the third ward councillor, I too support councillor Sed or former mayor Sed's amendment. It is important. Now, I asked Mr Abella a very important question, or I think it's important, but it's very relevant. How many years have you lived in Laparoo's? I think it was 50 plus. Now, anyone with that much experience and that much knowledge of the area, their values, their opinions should be valued and respected. And that's exactly what I'm going to do. And councillor Sed put forward a wonderful proposal. There's more to this issue than just moving a toilet block. There are people who talk about safety. They say if the toilet block is moved to the other side, we've got to cross the road. What about people with lesser ability? What about people with wheelchairs? So I think what we should do, making that the foundation of building a toilet block where it is, because where it is now, it blocks the views. We're spending $50,000 to make it a bit more functional. All this is very good, but I think we can do better. And doing better means putting into practice what councillor Sed has suggested. We should negotiate with Transport of New South Wales. It would be a better location. But as I said, we have to also look at safety. I've had people who've expressed views, 'Are we crossed to the other side? How will we accommodate people in wheelchairs? Mothers and babies?' There's a lot more at stake. So let's do a review. Let's come back with some ideas. But moving forward and what is being presented on the council paper tonight should be not, we shouldn't go ahead. It should be basketed away. That's all I'd say. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor De Souza. I've seen hands from councillor Lutzford and councillor Chapel. Before you begin, either of you asking questions or you contributing to the debate? So, okay, there is a question from councillor Lutzford and then councillor Chapel. Councillor Lutzford?
Question to the appropriate officer here. We've just spent an awful lot of money here coming up with this recommendation. My learned councillors on the other side here have now decided, you know, when we had ample opportunity to, you know, debate this prior when we knew, you know, what was going on, that they didn't proceed with moving the toilet block back then. And now we have this toilet block, the recommendation as it is. We've spent a lot of money to get to this point. And I just want to know, what impact does that have? How easy is it now to do this? And what will be the cost in determining where we're moving the toilet block again? Because I just think we're spending a lot of money on toilet blocks.
Thank you very much, councillor Lutzford. I'll direct that question to the director of city services, Mr Clark.
Thank you, through you, Mr Mayor. The toilet block in its proposed location is the most economically feasible solution, given there's no location change and impact on the sensitive landscape on Laparoo's Headland. That land is owned and controlled, owned essentially by the National Parks and Wildlife. And they have recommended that that location be selected for the toilet block to avoid any further disruption to the headland.
Thank you, Mr Clark. I have a question from councillor Chapel.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just further to what councillor Lutzford has asked there. I'd be interested in knowing the financial impact of further delaying what I understand is already a significantly delayed project. I would also like to understand, if we do delay on making a decision around the upgrade of this block, is it likely that we are going to see the existing substandard block in place for six months a year? Could you just give me a timeframe on that? And I also understand part of the rationale behind the upgrade here is about accessibility. I'm not aware of other accessible toilets nearby. Could you maybe provide some details about those? I think it's important to differentiate between one additional cubicle and an actually accessible cubicle for the large amounts of people in the area with a disability or who have prams or similar access needs. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor Chapel. Mr Clark?
Thank you, through you, Mr Mayor. Just to respond to the questions, the cost of delay, we're seeing at the moment the increase in price already for this project being considerable due to the market corrections and escalation in inflation of steel and materials and the like. We're seeing a rough escalation cost of about 3% year-on-year. Should this location not be chosen and we do go back to the drawing board as such, it is unlikely that this project will commence in the next financial year, the 22, 23 financial year, and if feasible, return in the 23, 24 financial year. In terms of the accessibility question, there is currently no publicly accessible toilets on the headland. And that was part of the concern with the suggested area of the STA site with accessibility at that location. And then finally, just to note consideration, we had discussed the lease tenure of the State Transit site in relation to the NZAC memorial. And the maximum we could get at that negotiation was one year.
Thank you. I have councillor Nielsen.
I'm speaking in opposition to this motion that's currently before us. And I wish I had actually been quicker to second the original, the recommendation from the council officer. But because it wasn't my ward and there were others from the South Ward who obviously are very committed to their ward, I didn't jump up and support the recommendation. But I think that really the recommendation was correct because of all the points that actually the officer has just addressed. Now, Mr Mayor, I don't think that we actually have the options that the motion put forward by councillor Sed, seconded by councillor Burst, that's not going to help us in any shape or form, unfortunately. I'm just wondering, using somebody else's wisdom, is there any way that we can immediately recommit the original motion? Should this particular motion put forward by councillor Sed and councillor Burst be lost, could we recommit the recommendation that's on the business paper?
Thank you, councillor Nielsen. What I might actually do is I will take that on notice for the moment. While the general manager is providing some advice, I will go to councillor Veitch on her question and then I'll return with an answer to that particular matter.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I just had a question through yourself to the relevant officer. My main concern, I am very much in favour of fixing up toilets down there, particularly in relation to accessibility. My main concern is really around the costs. For us non-engineers, builders, it is hard to kind of get your head around, you know, how a facility of this type and considering it's not, it's just kind of refurbishment, it can cost such a significant amount of money. So are you able to sort of offer some kind of detailed explanation on that?
Okay.
We've had two thoughts, but can, would I be right in saying, can someone just foreshadow the original motion and that while we carry on? You spoke?
Yes. Look, thank you, councillor Veitch. We'll throw to Mr Clark to provide an answer to that and then we'll turn to the suggestion from councillor Sed.
Thank you, through you, Mr Mayor. I do know councillor's point. It is an extremely expensive toilet block for the product that is being suggested. However, the cost is largely attributed to the site conditions at Laparoo's. So the ground conditions in which we're required to work on under the conservation management plan, the Aboriginal Impact Statement, which is very considerate of potential middens and items of significance in the local, sorry, in the surrounding ground at the toilet block. We also have to consider, as mentioned earlier, the escalation in prices of building materials and the time it's taken to get this project to the point that it is in now. So in, I suppose, consolidation of all those factors, the cost is as what's reported.
Look, thank you, councillor Veitch. Yep?
A very short follow-up question. So it's an existing structure and you talked about, you know, potential sort of heritage conservation or archaeological finds and so on. Is there a sort of a more extended area around that's being developed? And could you just give us a sense of the scale of that? Thank you.
Through you, Mr Mayor. If I just turn councillor's attention to the floor plan on page, I might be wrong, 284 of the business paper. It's a concept plan, that may be wrong as I'm on the computer. But in terms of the question, the accessible toilet is exten, it could be either before or after that. I've got it, it's a landscape concept plan. Sorry if I, page 270, it is in the paper, I believe. No. So councillor Hay has the, just to contextualise the question, you would note that there is an extension of the building. I don't have the exact square metreage of that extension. However, the accessible toilet needs foundations and also services to be run for that particular utility. In addition to the concrete landscape, the concrete and landscaped area surrounding the facility all require excavation into the ground material on site.
Thank you, Mr Clark. Is that all councillor Veitch? Yep, thank you. I note that there was a motion from councillor Sed to put it. However, there was a question on notice, so I will throw to the general manager for some advice in light of councillor Nielsen's question prior to putting it.
Through you, Mr Mayor. In the event that this motion is put and could be lost, I would suggest that a foreshadowed motion was to be presented. Given the original, the original motion lapsed, that motion could be resubmitted.
Councillor Nielsen?
Can I then foreshadow that should this be lost, that we, and I don't have to be the one moving the motion, it's not my ward, maybe someone else, but is it protocol that it's best that it's going to, I suppose it is.
I would recommend that you foreshadow and move it.
I shall. I've got to foreshadow that I shall move that should this motion put forward by councillor Sed and seconded by councillor Burst, I'll be putting through the recommendation as per the business paper.
Thank you.
Can I just, sorry, I know how to put it, but I just want to wrap up with one, two sentences. So wait on.
Yes.
Mr Mayor, so I just want to just reiterate, I just want to wrap up and to say that the reason why we have put this motion is because all three South Ward councillors, and to his credit, Mr Todd Clark, attended the Basen Boote's precinct meeting, which there was a lot of angst about. Because we do involve ourselves in the community a lot, there's a lot of angst about this building and that's why we've presented it this way. We're doing it for the sake of the South Ward. And Mr Todd Clark, to his credit, took a lot of hits that day. So, but that's why we brought it up. So, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Sed. I will now move and call for a vote. All those in favour of the motion in the name of Sed Burst, that council bring back a report after discussions with Transport for New South Wales regarding a 99-year lease with the toilet block being relocated across the road from the current proposed location. All those in favour? All those against? No. I declare that lost. Councillor Nielsen, it now being lost, you seek to move the recommendation on the business?
I'll make the recommendation as per the business paper.
Okay, thank you. Is there a seconder? Seconded by councillor Lutzford? Okay, councillor Nielsen, did you wish to speak on it?
No, I'm just glad that we're doing something.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Lutzford? Okay, thank you. Councillor De Rocha would like to speak on the motion. Sorry, De Souza.
That's all right. I've been called many things and I'm still around so many years later. But, Mr Mayor, you know what makes this council great? Is that we boast about a sense of community and we boast that we consult with our community. Former mayor Sed has made it clear that at the precinct committee meeting and the feedback him and I'm sure the new councillor Burst, and I'm sure we got it before, the people said, 'We can do better. This is the wrong place and this is the time to review it.' Now, that's what democracy is all about. I hear one of the councillors talk about money and someone else talks about budgets. All these things are all relevant. But building something which is a white elephant, which the people don't want and don't want in that location when we have a better place, that is unacceptable. That is disrespectful to the residents. When your three ward councils are saying in unison that we are listening, we are listening to the people and we are asking this wonderful council to support the community. A vote against what councillor Sed proposed is a vote against the people, especially the people of the South Ward. And that's been done. But we can still recover. We can do better. That's all I'd say, Mr Mayor. Leave it at that.
Thank you. Councillor Chapel?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just briefly, I think there is extensive evidence of community consultation that's in our report with a large number of people very favourable saying that correctly, the existing toilet block is a disgrace and well below the standard we should expect in that area. If you've been in there, you would have to agree with that. And I think improving amenity in this area in the next financial year is a lot of a goal.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Burst?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. May I be so bold in saying that has the area to the east of the site been looked at? You don't need to make a call to Energy Australia. It'd be established that the whole slope from the road down to the water was evacuated back in 1950s to lay the 220,000-volt cables servicing east and south from Kernel. It would be an ideal solution and one that could be fully investigated. So that land on that side, we're not digging in the rock. It's ground that has been reworked back in the 1950s, seven years ago, to lay cables. So I don't know if it's being investigated properly, but it's something I think should be looked at. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr Burst. I'm going to take that as a comment. There being no further speakers, I will go, return to the move of the motion to close the debate.
Just simply to say that there was no other option. The idea of the other site was a no-go. So we're back where we started from and let's make progress, everyone.
Thank you. I'll now put the motion. All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Thank you. We now move to NM1/22. Notice the motion from councillor De Souza, shortage of parking at Laparoo's on weekends. Councillor De Souza? Before councillor De Souza begins, do I have a seconder? Seconded by councillor Burst, oh sorry councillor Rosenfield.
Good evening councillors, and welcome to the new council term, I speak to you this evening excited about council's future and the future of our community, I'm excited to be given the opportunity to represent the South Ward for a third term as a council, and to continue the great work of this council, I'm also excited to see so many new faces join us on council, also ready to represent the community, and to ensure the area remains a great place to live, work and visit, it's been an honour and a privilege to be a councillor in this great city, and I'm confident in saying that Randwick City is stronger than it's ever been, and has a bright future ahead, I look forward to working the returning councillors, I look forward to working with those who are joining us as new councillors, together we can ensure this community remains one of the best local government areas in New South Wales, the notice of motion I presented today regards the shortage of parking at La Perouse on weekends, now, Mr Bella organised a wonderful function on Sunday, it was to celebrate and honour the Catholic priest period, rest of the first Catholic priest period, anyway, there were a lot of people, lots of cars, and Mr Bella himself was made aware by his actions that there is a shortage of parking in that area, he himself parked outside the perimeter on crown land, and in doing so, he encouraged others to do the same, now I learnt in media training that you, oh, it's an acronym which sounds a bit yucky and cocky, but anyway, the word was S E X, statement, evidence, explanation, the statement is there is a shortage, the evidence is someone like Mr Bella, who's been there 50 years, not finding any space and forced to park illegally, and the explanation is looking into the future with the museum and other things happening, we need to improve our parking, now all I'm asking is to consider the shortage and to do a review, okay, so that's it, I'm not making any statements, I'm not showing us the way, I'm saying let's do things better, so I'll leave it at that, it's a pretty benign motion, but you know, leaders either lead by looking in a rear view mirror, and that's, and they make decisions, or you're a leader like I'd like to say I am, we look into the future, and we look at the fork in the road, and before we come to it, we make decisions, that is the place we're at on this particular matter, but remember, it's all about review and consideration, and I guess the famous word we've used many times in this council, consultation, so I'll leave it at that, Mr Mayor, this is a very benign motion, but an important one for the South Ward.
Councillor Rosenfield.
Yes, full agreement with councillor De Souza, I believe that if there's more parking at La Perouse, it'll encourage more people from both the LGA and outside the LGA to visit, it'll benefit business, it'll certainly encourage future small businesses to invest in the area, and the economic viability of the area will be improved, so very happy to second councillor De Souza's motion.
Thank you, are there any further speakers? Okay, there being no, councillor Burst.
Thank you, Mayor, I would like to suggest that we add an amendment to this, to this motion, in that we look at the overall standard operating procedures of how La Perouse is to be run, on weekends we know the, the problems with traffic, so we need to have a clear long-term plan on how we're gonna mani-, traffic manage the area, maybe the solution isn't more vehi-, uh, more parking spots, but it certainly needs some sort of management of how we have a long-term strategy.
Councillor De Souza, do you accept that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, now being incorporated into the motion, I suggest that be point C, are there any further speakers? Councillor of each.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and thank you councillors, I just had a question through the chair to the mover and the seconder, would you consider having the matter referred to the traffic committee, and perhaps the new, although we haven't voted on it yet, but we'll be considering a new committee structure tonight, including an integrated transport committee, and that would give away the, the issues, I'm not a South Ward councillor, such as yourself, and I, you know, defer to your, your knowledge of the area, but it is complex and, and difficult, the traffic issues down there, and I wonder if it would benefit from a discussion at those committees, would you, would you consider that as an amendment?
Mr Mayor, I don't have any problem with anything that'll make it better, I will support, all these ideas are very helpful, there's been nothing negative on, on this particular topic, it's all about making things better, and of course, I'll happy to incorporate it, thank you, and the second I'm sure will.
Okay, just before we do that, I might throw to the general manager, who has a suggestion, just as the wording of point C.
Through you, Mr Mayor, can I, can I just suggest to the mover and, and seconder, that where we say look at standard operating procedures, can we change that to develop a strategy in relation to how La Perouse's traffic is managed, generally, operating procedures are not dealt with at a council level.
Again, further improvement, of course we can, thank you.
Thank you, I've got councillor Nielsen, then councillor, sorry, councillor, sorry, councillor of each just has a follow-on from her suggestion, and then I've got a councillor Nielsen.
It was to the Randwick Traffic Committee and the proposed Integrated Transport Committee, yeah, which.
Problem, not a problem.
Thank you, councillor Nielsen.
My question refers actually to that point D that councillor of each has made, I, it's just a question in the sense of, I guess I put it to, well, I'm not quite sure, I suppose the general manager, sorry, Mr Mayor, sorry, general manager, the point is that I think that both these committees are not necessarily, they do not need to be brought into the equation until a bit further down the track, surely, I suppose it doesn't really matter that the point is there, but, I suppose just leave it.
Councillor Nielsen, do you still have a question to the general manager, or was that a statement?
Well, I suppose the question is that, is there any worth in having this extra point, or are we better off for a simple and strategic decision-making process going for the, further forward, are we better off just restricting them to point C, and then, if necessary, it'll go to point D as a matter of course?
Thank you, madam general manager.
Through you, through you, Mr Mayor, yes, that, that could, that could be referred as, as a matter of course, obviously, both of those committees have very different charters, and it would depend on the strategy as to how it was submitted to, to each committee.
So, just a follow-up question.
Councillor.
I'm not meaning to, I'd be critical of, of the intent of your point D, but I'm, I'm just not wanting to slow down the process, so I just thought the process would be speedier if we were just to start, stay with the first three points, because if there's going to be any process going forward, it, this is, the next part's going to be automatic, so just a question of going forward, would it be easier in terms of going forward to stick with the four, or go with the three?
Madam general manager.
Through you, Mr Mayor, dot point C would generally be undertaken after dot point A, B, C, in any case.
Thank you. Councillor Chappell.
Sorry, this should be very brief, just to the mover of the motion, could you just explain briefly what you mean by placing more resources?
Councillor Chappell, could you please repeat your question through to the mover of the motion, councillor De Souza?
Sure, councillor De Souza, regarding point B of your motion, you mentioned placing more resources at La Perouse, I was hoping you could expand on what that means.
Well, you know, we were talking about maybe having more rangers, the former mayor Sed, when there was a problem, he addressed it, he changed the signs to four hour parking, that's wonderful, but there's no one, I, I lived there, round there, near, near close to Mr Bella, there's no one monitoring it or policing it, so people are continuing to park long, so that's what I've talked about, human resources, having more rangers, there are other things we can do, like we've done at Coogee and other places, we can have signs saying that, that car, that parking area is full, so people turn around, so I'm glad you brought that point up, and it's important, the locals are complaining, because some of them can't get to their homes, because there's only one way in and one way out, so visitors in that join the queue and go to the loop, and others, like most likely Mr Bella and other residents Mirror Book or Crescent and that, can't get to their homes, it takes them 15 to 20 minutes on a Sunday, which is wrong, so the question about resources, I'll leave that to the general manager and others, they're the clever ones, I'm sure they'll find out, and he asked for investigation, but if I was thinking of it, yes, more rangers attending, maybe a signage at the, where is it, the Little Bay, at the roundabout saying it's full, or at where Anzac Parade reaches Bunnerong Road, stopping people or turning people around, but I leave those that are experts in the field to investigate how resources, but mine was more human resources, that of rangers policing that area and being more present, so we can move the traffic on.
Councillor Olive.
Mr Mayor, can I move an amendment to delete part B? I, I just think that that.
Before you begin into the substantive debate, do you have a seconder for that amendment? Seconded by councillor Chappell.
Yeah, okay, I, I just think that talking about improving parking places preems part A, where it's just asking for a review, and, and part C, where it's looking at a, a strategy, you know, sort of on how La Perouse's traffic is to be managed moving forward, so, you know, sort of, if we, if we get rid of that, then it, it makes it open to many more options to, to look at this complex problem, thank you.
You now accept the removal of point B? It's, it's a matter for you councillor De Souza, I just.
Point, are you removing point B councillor? Because that was what the general manager, you know, buttressed or, and, and spoke about, underpinned how we could, we talked about a strategy, because at the end of the day, you need strategies to move forward, so if you remove point B, you might be, you know, it doesn't, look, my concern is investigating and improving, but point B helps to underpin point A, and then councillor Nielsen's point, which was the most important one, point C, was further underpin and buttressed the motion, so all three are intertwined, by you separating it, you might dilute it, where you may not get the outcome for the community they deserve, so do you, is that what you're suggesting?
Yes, yes, could, could I, could I just suggest from the benefit of the meeting, it sounds like councillor De Souza does not accept the amendment, and will now move to the debate on the amendment very quickly? Mr Olive?
Well, I accept.
You, you, okay, councillor, councillor De Souza accepts the strikeout of point B, which now removes it, are there any further speakers? Okay, there being no further speakers, I will now put it, all those in favour? All those against? I declare it carried, okay, NM 7/22, notice of motion from councillor Burst, additional no more incinerator flags to raise community awareness, move councillor Burst, do I have a seconder? Seconded by, seconded by councillor Hamilton. Mr Burst, councillor Burst.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, the notice of motion, no inciner-, no Matraville incinerators, flags and banners across Randwick City Council to raise community awareness, it's about raising community awareness, so my mandatory motion is that no more incinerators, we look at 35 banners and 15 flags, which each can be purchased and positioned on Randwick City Council banners and flag poles across our beaches, our key community centres, similar to present, our Randwick City Council flags, a bit of background, an incinerator in Matraville will have a toxic impact across the whole of Randwick City Council and our community, more councils are getting involved, and we need to be leading the community awareness, considering the toxic incinerator is proposed in South Ward of Randwick City Council, I believe we have an obligation to lead the community awareness and support the grassroots local group, no more incinerators, in community awareness, banners and flags on Randwick City Council poles at Key Lake locations, beaches and city town hubs, and that's my motion, so.
Thank you councillor Burst, councillor Hamilton, then I'll go to councillor Chappell.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, I'd like to start by commending councillor Burst on putting this motion forward, as a new councillor, it is nerve-wracking to, to stand up and put your first motion forward and ask for the support of all the people on the council, and I, so I commend you, and I think this is a, is a great cause, I know that the residents are fully behind you, and you have already done a lot of work around this particular motion, so I support this, and I hope that others do as well.
Thank you, councillor Chappell.
Thanks councillor Burst for bringing this, obviously, the campaign to stop an incinerator being built in Matraville is something we strongly support, I was just interested to know how you came up with those numbers specifically, and whether, like what specific area of Randwick LGA that's anticipated to cover.
Thank you councillor Chappell, to the mover of the motion, councillor Burst.
Thank you councillor Chappell via the net, Randwick City Council has 109 banners in, across our district, and 32 flag poles, so I'm, I'm a bit of a numbers man, a percentages man, and so about a third of the banners would have no more, no Matraville incinerator flags on them, and fif-, uh, 48% of the flags, it was just, something I've done previously with Save the Araby and so on, and there's certain, certain amounts, you don't want to overdo it, you don't want to underdo it, you just wanna, you don't want white noise when you, when you're getting awareness, you want people to be supporting with the issue, so.
Through, oh, actually, is it a question councillor Sed? Yeah, I think I know where this is going, councillor Sed, you have a question?
Yes, it is, Mr Mayor, thank you, I just, the question to the mover, I've noticed it's changed from the book, but there was no mention of an amendment, because in the business paper, it's actually no more incinerators, on there it's no more, no Matraville incinerators, so just to clarify which one it is.
Thank you.
The, the one in the book was a, was a pre-, preamble, basically, the official one is what's on the board here, because we're, we're talking about Matraville, so it's very, it's better to be very clear about what our goal is and what we're supporting.
And my second question, which I was thinking of. Councillor Sed, councillor Burst, can you turn off your microphone, then we'll go to councillor Sed for your question. Councillor Lutzford, you need to turn your microphone off, thank you.
Then the second question, Mr Mayor, is that does this override councillor's De Souza's motion of last year, that how does the procedure work there, because he did exactly the same.
Okay, thank you.
But he didn't put the numbers down.
Okay, thank, thank you councillor Sed, I'll refer that to the general manager.
Through you, Mr Mayor, councillor De Rocha's motion of October last year has resulted in 36 banners being produced, and they will be installed in Matraville and Little Bay very shortly, so just, just listening to councillor Burst, and, and the calculation as to how you got to the number of banners, I would suggest there'd be no change from councillor De Rocha's motion.
Is that a follow-up question from councillor? Is that a follow-up question from councillor Sid or a comment? Thank you.
Um, can I just ask, Mr. Mayor, can I ask the general manager, on those banners that are being produced, because I don't think councillor De Roche was specific, is it going to be the symbol of no more, no Matreville incinerators, or what are we actually putting on there?
Through to the relevant officer? Yeah, just one second, we'll get a point of clarification on that. Um, is there, I had councillor Luxford. Councillor Luxford, you had a comment?
Just a question, Mr. Mayor, I'm just a bit confused now as to what councillor Burst was referring to as preamble and what is actually the real motion. Uh, well, you know, because we've got no more incinerators, no more Matreville incinerator, and he indicated that what was in the book was preamble.
Okay, thank you.
So I'd like clarification.
Thank you. Uh, the motion reads that the no Matreville incinerator banners and fifteen flags be purchased and positioned on the RC banner and flag poles across our beaches and key town centres, similar to present RCC flags. That is the motion.
The book ultimately is a draft.
Yeah, so, so, so just as a point of clarification, it is what councillor Burst moves, and councillor Burst has confirmed that it is thirty-five no Matreville incinerator banners. Through you, uh, to, and answer to the question on notice to the general manager.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, it is my understanding that the, the branding for, uh, the no incinerator campaign on the banners does not include the no Matreville logo.
Uh, there is-
Mr. Mayor, another foot of, another question.
You have a question, do you? Councillor Sid.
Um, are those banners, have they been produced, or they're about to be produced?
Thank you, Mr. Sid. I'll have to refer that through to the relevant officer. While we seek clarification to that, um, what I will ask is I actually have a question as it relates to, um, through, uh, through to the general manager. The motion, as I see it, does not identify a source of additional funding, if it envisaged that there will be an addition, an additional purchase of flags. And am I correct in saying that that would then require a further report of council identifying, um, funds before any decision can be made by council? Is that correct?
Through, through you, Mr. Mayor, just to answer the earlier question, the banners have been ordered already. The, the banners have wording on them, um, that states recycled not burnt, say no to the Matreville incinerator, um, with the, um, the, the no symbol on, on, uh, top of the stacks. And if council was to, uh, decide to change that design, we would have to purchase another thirty-eight banners.
Thank you. Councillor Sid, can I please confirm that it is in fact a question? You talk to the motion, then I'll go to councillor Luxford, and then I'll have to return to you with a later point. Thank, okay, councillor Beech.
Uh, I'd like to propose an amendment, uh, that council notes that a number of, uh, flags opposing the proposed waste-to-energy incinerator have been ordered and will be placed on display in the Randwick LGA in the coming weeks. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Uh, seconded by councillor Luxford. Uh, councillor Beech, did you want to speak to it at all, or that's fine? Councillor Luxford? Okay, are there any further speakers on the amendment? Okay, you accept the, the amendment? Okay, thank you. You're going to speak, okay, thank you. Uh, councillor, I actually went to councillor Sid. Councillor Sid, is there anything further you'd like to add? Councillor Sid, and then I'll go to councillor Nielsen.
I'd just like to, uh, reiterate that I am talking about councillor De Roche's original motion. Councillor De Roche worked myself since the beginning of this protest, we were there with the Matreville precinct. The design was designed by council with the no Matreville incinerators. When councillor, uh, De Roche put this motion through, he totally envisaged that the symbol would be on those banners. I'm very disappointed that that symbol is not on the banners, the people of Matreville, the Matreville precinct. We're not asking for no, uh, no more incinerators, we're actually asking for the original no Matreville incinerators, which was the whole essence of that whole protest from day one. So it's very disappointing that, uh, again, unfortunately, Matreville's got left off the whole protest. I don't know why Randwick LGA is a bit ashamed of calling it Matreville, of putting it on there, but it really disappoints me that emblem is not on there.
Thank you. Uh, are there any further speakers? Oh, councillor Nielsen.
Well, I suppose I'll just follow up on a point, and it'll be a question, it's following up from a point that councillor Sid just, um, made, that, um, I suppose, I presume the major point that councillor, um, Burst is making is the fact that a no more incinerator campaign means that that campaign could be relevant throughout the whole city of Randwick. Uh, I guess that's a question to councillor Burst, is that your intent?
A no more incinerators campaign could mean the whole of New South Wales.
Yeah.
Um, and I think it's important, I, I think it's important that we, um, we focus on, on our city at this stage, and if it's successful, that, and it is stopped in, in Randwick, that will help that group fight the issue across New South Wales.
Thank you. Uh, for the benefit of the meeting, I'd just like to throw to the general manager just with some clarification as to the comments, and then I'll return to you councillor Nielsen.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, just to clarify that the banners do say recycled not burnt, say no to the Matreville incinerator.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Nielsen.
Sorry, that response from the general manager is the, to what is going to be said on these, to put on these new flags, is that what your answers meant?
Correct.
Correct, okay. Well, I suppose that, uh, with all due respect to the points that councillor Sid was, um, making about the campaign that's already underway, um, councillor Burst's follow-on, um, intent does make sense, but it's all getting a little bit confusing, perhaps. Anyway, I suppose under, under the fact that, um, councillor Burst is acknowledging that it could be anywhere and everywhere across New South Wales and across the world and whatever, I suppose I'll just go along with the flow.
Okay, look, uh, thank you, if there are no further, sorry, there is a, councillor Hamilton would like to speak?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I just want to clarify that I was under the impression that councillor Beech was adding the council notes number underneath the first point that was, um, in the original motion.
No.
So to replace the whole entire, so that council notes that a number of flags stating that opposition to the proposed Matreville incinerator had been ordered.
Thank you. There being no further speakers, I will now put it. All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Thank you councillors. We will now move to the next, uh, item of business, NM nine slash twenty-two, notice of motion from councillor Chapel, equal pay for equal play. Uh, move councillor Chapel, do I have a seconder? Seconded by councillor Beech. Seconded by councillor D'Souza.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'll be very brief, I think, um, Ms. Lucy Small, who spoke earlier to this motion, uh, provided a very compelling case for why this is an action council should take. I think local government plays a particularly strong role in community sport, which is where most of the grant allocations that will be impacted by this motion are happening. Um, so that's, for instance, like my daughter's soccer team, the Maroobra Dragons, um, where it is essential for young girls to get the same opportunities to play and participate as young boys. Um, in New South Wales, we have the Active Kids Programme, which is intended to get more young people playing sport, it's particularly targeting increasing access to young girls, but it's, uh, it's lagging. So there is still not equal participation from young girls as young boys in New South Wales. To target this, the New South Wales Government has a four-year per sport her way strategy, which is intended to target this. This is basically our opportunity to have council be an active participant in meeting those targets and getting equity there. Surfing is a very important sport, uh, particularly in Maroobra and Central Ward, um, and I note what Lucy, uh, what Ms. Small gave, the evidence about, um, the investment by surfing New South Wales and the commitment by surfing bodies at all levels to getting equity in the sport. I would also like to just highlight, I think what councillors are probably all aware of, the benefits of participation in sports, which are, you know, I think equally applicable to women and men, uh, which are community connection, physical and mental health, and resilience, which I think after the last few COVID years, it's a great time to be thinking about getting back into sporting competitions, getting out on the field with our friends. I'd just like to finally end by saying, um, I have been lucky to be a member of the Randwick Saints AFL team, which have men's and women's teams that have been going on for three years. It's been a fight for many of the clubs in this area to get, uh, toilets for women that have doors that close and other such, uh, extreme luxuries. Um, council has been very good, as has the state government, in providing funding for those kinds of upgrades, um, and I think this is a way we can kind of continue that impetus we have there. Thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Chapel. Councillor D'Souza is the seconder.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councillors, let's make injustice and inequity visible tonight. That's exactly what this motion does. Our struggles in this world, councillors, are similar, and the lessons to overcome them and to move forward, changing ourselves and those around us, will apply equally to all. I fully support this notice of motion, which addresses parity and equal pay for equal play. It matters not your politics, it matters not your gender, your ethnicity, or your social status. This motion addresses the concerns of many of us to build a fairer, socially just society in Australia. I also have difficulty understanding how a wealthy nation like ours, which boasts about equity and a fair go for all, seems to have forgotten a very real group of its citizens, and because of their gender are not being equally remunerated for the equal amount of effort. Needless to say, self-respect and dignity stem from being treated as an equal. I've always believed in a country conceived in liberty and dedicated to the proposition that all men and women are created equal. A country that believes in social justice and a fair go for all, a country that believes in building a fairer Australia, where our national wealth is shared by all, where everyone has a right to work, to free choice of employment, just and favorable conditions of work, and to protection against unemployment. An Australia where everyone, without any discrimination, has a right to equal pay for equal work. Where everyone who works has a right to just and favorable remuneration, ensuring for themselves and their families an existence worthy of human dignity and supplemented if necessary by other means of social protection. You see, the challenge we face tonight, councillors, can be solved with one meeting in one night. I commend the deputy mayor on her motion, and she has my full support. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Hamilton, then councillor Beech.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I also commend councillor Chapel, and it, I'm really excited to be a part of the council with a majority of female representation, because as we balance out representation, we're able to do this. We're able to speak for the women in our society and help them earn what they deserve. So I'm, I'm really proud of this, uh, being presented here at council, I fully support it, and I also, uh, want to thank the, the speaker, because that was a really compelling, um, situation. I mean, she was put under, uh, the spotlight in such a way, and she faced it with courage and dignity, um, and also came to us and gave her a glimpse into her story, and I'm, um, extremely proud that I was here tonight to see that. So I am absolutely supporting this motion.
Thank you councillor Beech.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and yeah, I too would like to commend councillor Chapel, it's a terrific motion, and it was wonderful to get a chance to hear, um, Ms. Lucy Small come to speak. I remember, uh, when this was out in the media, when was it, last year? I, I missed the exact date, but it caused quite a stir, and I think a lot of us were genuinely shocked, uh, at the disparity between the prize money, and just as much as Ms. Small was, it must have actually been pretty devastating, to be quite honest, for her and the other female competitors in that competition, to get to that level and then to be told, you are getting, whatever the amount was, such, such a significantly lower amount. I can't imagine what that actually would have felt like. I think it would have, uh, just been quite, quite devastating. So, um, I commend, uh, I commend the speaker and the mover of this motion, um, and to the ongoing campaign, because I really think councils, there's so many surfing competitions down at Maroobra, they're happening, uh, sometimes it feels like every other weekend. Uh, we have the opportunity to send a very strong message to the sporting community, to the surfing fraternity, and not just fraternity, community, um, that this kind of behaviour is absolutely no longer acceptable, uh, and it's not something that council will support. Um, and I hope other councils follow suit, because there's obviously surfing competitions not only happening, uh, in the Randwick LGA, but other parts of Sydney, the Northern Beaches down in Sutherland, no doubt up and down the coast, and this might be the start of a great campaign that we can see in other councils in Australia. Thanks.
Thank you. There being no further speakers, uh, councillor Chapel to close the debate.
Thank you everybody for your support.
Thank you. I'll now put the motion. All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Okay, thank you. NM one thirteen slash twenty-two, notice of motion from councillor Nielsen, heritage protection for the building known as eleven A Massey Avenue Coogee, moved councillor Nielsen, do I have a seconder? Seconded by councillor Hamilton.
Thank you councillors. Um, I think you would have seen the, um, information that was provided by the speaker tonight, it's very compelling evidence of why this building needs to have heritage protection, and the, uh, disturbing fact that we have that, uh, there is no DA for it, it's the, all the information that we know relating to this particular building is that, uh, it's going to be demolished, that's, that's it. And when you see the beautiful property, the property itself, and the heritage attributes that it has, it's totally worthy of retention and proper recognition. And then when you hear the statements from the heritage consultants that our speaker referred to tonight, Professor Mackay, and, uh, he didn't mention the name of, um, the heritage planner Ruth Daniel, but both of these, um, very highly esteemed heritage planners have made exceptionally strong comments, saying that the building should be retained and conserved, and the importance that it has within the setting of the more recurrent heritage conservation area. So I have just a question before I formally move this motion, Mr. Mayor, and that is to the director of planning, through you to the director of planning, is there stronger wording that can be used to ensure that a heritage conservation order can be placed on this property than the current motion that we have before us, Mr. Kurjaku?
Mr. Kurjaku?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, no, there is no stronger wording that can be provided. Um, the council cannot proceed with an interim heritage order until such time as, as it has a preliminary heritage assessment report before it, um, to consider if, uh, there is merit in listing it, uh, on an interim basis. Um, so the, the best the council could do at this stage is to request that heritage report and then consider it prior to imposing an interim heritage order.
Thank you, Mr. Kurjaku, and I'm sure that I'm going to get the support from councillors round the table here, and I'm just- And I'm just wondering if, as I'm sure I will have the support, because I know we all were very highly respectful of heritage, and certainly the presentation was very compelling, how quickly will council be able to provide this work?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The heritage consultant has been engaged approximately a week or so ago. And I'll have to take that on notice and see exactly when that can be provided. But it should be within the next week or two.
Thank you. Well, I'll proudly move this motion, and I will also add that I'm very hopeful that this building will be retained. And it would be wonderful, I'm sure councillor Hamilton agrees with me, if we could all get an inspection of this property, and certainly be wonderful if we could do something to ensure that the flat that's not in the greatest shape at the moment is brought up to proper order. But I commend this motion to you, councillors.
Councillor Hamilton is the second up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think one of the things that we all need to understand is that once it's gone, it's gone. So even if we can't save every single home and every single, you know, interwar building such as this, we do everything we can to try to save it. So a preliminary heritage assessment sounds that it's already underway, or we have the mechanisms in place to begin this process as soon as possible. And as I said, if we aren't able to save it, we can still say we did everything we could.
Councillor Rosenfeld.
Yes, I took a drive down to this place on Saturday, and I have to say, it's stunning architecture. I think it's really important to keep buildings of this era, so future generations can basically appreciate how we lived in those times. Thank you.
Thank you. There being no further speakers. Councillor Nielsen, no need to close the debate. Okay, thank you. I'll now put it. All those in favour? All those against?
I think it was unanimous. Can we note that it was unanimous?
You can, yes. Okay.
Oh, sorry, D'Souza's not here.
Okay.
Unanimous for those in the room.
I declare that carried. Thank you. We will now move to the next item. NM 14/22, notice of motion from councillor Nielsen. Council to do more to ensure the protection of native fauna in the city of Randwick. Moved councillor Nielsen. Do I have a second up? Seconded by councillor Veitch.
Oh, I thought councillor Raphael was seconded.
Oh, sorry.
Do I have a second up?
Yeah.
Councillor Pandefany. Thank you.
Sorry.
It's all right.
Thank you. I think we were given a very compelling argument or presentation tonight by the speaker and the pictures, images that she showed us of the wildlife that unfortunately are impacted by our lovely little domestic animals and so on. Does bring home the fact that we should be more responsible for our pets. But I think the other point that is important, having come through COVID, we do know that quite a few people have been living in seclusion, loneliness, and so on, and their domestic pets have become far more important to them. However, that doesn't negate the sense that we need to encourage people to be more responsible for their pets, with their pets, and responsible for their behaviour and so on. So I have carefully worded this motion so that it concentrates on an educational process. And I think that we have got, well, I don't think, I know, we have got very, very good officers down there in our Environment Centre. We've got the fantastic resources of those many volunteers that we have working at Wires, that we could have a truly awesome educational programme. And I would hope that we would truly see, within a couple of years, a reduction in the number of injuries to wildlife. And in fact, while I haven't put that into the motion, perhaps that's something that we can check with Wires, they always keep the statistics. But I would just like to commend this motion to you and ask that, could we please action this? Again, I'm sure that this is going to be carried. Could we action this, please? Please, please, please. Who do I look to? Oh, he's not even in the room. Sorry, I shouldn't say that. Could I action at Mr. Mayor? Could I action at general manager to ensure that we actually do see some action on this campaign? Thank you.
Councillor Pandefany is the second up.
Yeah, I would just like to second that, because I think that an education campaign can create a sense of positivity around the message that is really important to get across. As mentioned, I think a lot of people don't actually know about this. And I think, you know, in the community, it can create division when active education isn't out there. And if that active education materials are coming from the council, then it can be a positive point of information between neighbours around the streets, yeah, so that it doesn't actually create division. It's more about education and positivity and support for each other, how people can do that with their pets. Thanks.
Councillor Veitch.
Thank you. I commend the motion and I 100% support it. I think there's a huge amount council can do to help protect the native wildlife through an education campaign like this. I've got an incredibly minor amendment to offer to the mover, that council develop or reactivate an ongoing communication and educational strategy. Because I think this is something we need to keep reminding people about. You know, we have all sorts of campaigns, they might last for a couple of weeks or a month or so, and then it disappears, something else comes up. So I think this is something we actually need to keep uppermost in people's minds. We have a lot of really wonderful native wildlife in our LGA. They are suffering huge stress. And I think it's with, there's other council policies that we do keep in people's minds through these types of campaigns. So, yes. Thank you.
Thank you. It was accepted by councillor Nielsen. Are there any further speakers? There being no further. You may, councillor Sead.
Our raiders pick up dogs, obviously. Do we pick up cats as well?
Through to the relevant officer, Mr. Kurjaku.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Only if we can catch them.
Thank you, Mr. Kurjaku. I take that as being answered, councillor Sead. There being no further speakers on the matter. Councillor Nielsen, would you like to close the debate? Okay, councillor Nielsen will not close the debate, so I'll now put it. All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Okay, thank you. We'll now move to the next notice of motion. NM 16, notice of motion from councillor Veitch, support for asylum seekers. Councillor Veitch. Seconded by councillor Luxford.
I'd like to raise a point of order.
Sorry, moved by, moved councillor Veitch, seconded by councillor Nielsen.
Point of order, under section 1511, part C of the code of meeting practice. Is this a matter outside the jurisdiction of the council? I mean, asylum seekers, really, that's a matter for the federal parliament, this is local government, so I move a point of order.
Look, while I do understand the sentiment of the point of order, there are actions which do relate to the council, including, can, Mr. Kelly, can you just scroll down for a second? Thank you. Including writing to several other members of parliament, leaders of various governments and the like. These would be actions which are undertaken by council. As a result, I won't rule it out of order, even though I do understand the sentiment. Thank you. Councillor Veitch as the mover of the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, councillors. Look, we all heard tonight from a very eminent member of our community, Mr. Philip Feinstein. Mr. Philip Feinstein has received an Order of Australia, and a couple of years ago was awarded the very high honour of New South Wales Volunteer of the Year. I met him when I was first elected to council, and ever since then, he has been a tireless, ever since I've known him, and obviously many years before, he has been a tireless advocate for refugees and asylum seekers, going out every single week, travelling out to Villa Wood. We recently, you know, witnessed the spectacle of the incident around the Australian Open, and it brought into sort of harsh light the situation and just absolutely atrocious predicament of the young men stranded in this hotel in Melbourne. There have also been young men up in Brisbane at the Central Hotel, which happened to be an old motel that I used to walk past every day on my way from school. And to think that those men may have been just living there for so many years, having been evacuated under a medical emergency from Papua New Guinea or Nauru, and now to just be languishing there, having been incarcerated simply for seeking safety in another country for so many years, since the age of 15. Many of us have children that age or similar in this room, I believe. Councillors, I believe it is a matter for every level of government, for every individual. We have seen this time and time again, when injustices swept under the carpet, someone else's problem, not my level of government, not my job. In fact, Randwick council has a proud history of supporting asylum seekers. We have had motions to council, and we are part of the local government mayor task force. I've referred to this quite extensively in the background to provide councillors with that kind of information. There's many, many councils who are part of this Back Your Neighbor campaign, dozens in fact, representing over six million Australians. We've had motions to the New South Wales Local Government, New South Wales Conference, the National General Assembly of Local Government. These were carried, supported by councils across New South Wales, across Australia. And more recently, we have seen councils such as City of Ride advocate for support for the Afghan asylum seekers, and the City of Hobart also advocating for the refugees brought from PNG and Nauru. We can't just sit idly by. This is something we have a chance to show leadership, to offer a helping hand. I can only, I can't actually even imagine what it must be like to have the spotlight shone on your predicament for those young men in the Park Hotel in Melbourne, in the world eye of the media for five minutes, sort of like being stranded on an island when a plane flies over, waving a flag, hoping someone will see them, but the plane passes by. We need to keep this in the public eye and keep up the pressure. It was a huge opportunity, and I hope you will support this. It would certainly, you never know. You just never know if those small actions will make a difference. I hope we can make a difference. Thank you, councillors.
Councillor Nielsen.
I'd like to add an amendment, and that is point three, and I've sent it to Mr. Kelly. And if he could just put it up on the screen. It's basically acknowledging the importance and contribution that cultural diversity has played in shaping the Randwick LGA in a visible and friendly way by a, once again, displaying banners and or posters, including such wording as, "All are welcome now." Councillors, on your table, you will find, I've circulated an image, and this is an image of the banners and posters that we did have, and so I assume we still have them. And I would encourage all of you to acknowledge, and I take on board the point that you made, councillor Rosenfeld, but I think things like this are very useful, and they do make a big difference. And I certainly can say that I don't, well, I'm quite sure, we didn't have any complaints whatsoever in the community when we had these banners up. They were in posters in busshelves and banners in appropriate locations across the city. And I'm also suggesting that if possible, we have banners displayed at strategic locations to coincide with the SPOT Festival, which is on March 13th, Harmony Day, March 21st, and Palm Sunday, April 10th. So I was hoping that, I've seconded the motion, and I'm hoping that the mover will accept that.
Yes, very happy to support.
Thank you.
So I think you've all had a chance to have a look at these, and I think that this will also help give more gravitas, hopefully, to our campaign. And I think we should all be supporting refugees, and I take the point that it was just, oh, it was just, it was horrible to watch what was happening, all the attention for one tennis player and the conditions that the others were living in in the same hotel. So I commend this motion to you.
Thank you. I have councillor D'Souza, but before I go to councillor D'Souza, councillor Rosenfeld, did you just want to ask a question, or were you going to speak to the matter? Okay, councillor D'Souza, and then I'll go to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too commend this motion. Issues like this are human. They shouldn't be politicised. Those of you that know me know my faith, and I'm a Christian. And Christianity generally guides me, it's my moral compass, and it tells me the difference between right and wrong. But, you know, if not for that innkeeper in Egypt that showed kindness and refuge to Mary and Joseph, Jesus would not have been born. And of course, without Jesus being born, Christianity wouldn't have come about. So if we look at this through that lens, the single lens of Jesus, Mary and Joseph, you see that they were refugees, they had turned to someone for help, and we showed them kindness, or the innkeeper showed them kindness and goodness. And that changed the world. And I would like to say, changed the world for the better. So also, here, we have people in need, we have documents that show how long some people have been in asylum, we were told about the cost, all these things are relevant. But what about the human suffering? What are these people going to do? I don't think anyone should come to this country illegally, et cetera, and we should allow them in, and we can get into a different debate. But I'm talking as a human being, as someone who subscribes to kindness and compassion. Where there is wrong, councillors, we must right it. Where there is suffering, we must stop it. Where there is injustice, we must correct it. Where there's despair, we need to offer hope. And that's what this motion does. I fully support it. As I said, I don't want to make it political, and we can, let's look at it with a lens of humanity, and a lens where we say, enough is enough. As the Lord said to Moses, or to the Pharaoh, "Let my people go." They should be let go.
Councillor Rosenfeld.
Yeah, just want to make the point that basically we do need to remember that the reason that the federal government, and this is obviously federal policy, so we have to go back to that, the reason the federal government introduced their policy when Tony Abbott became Prime Minister is to stop deaths at sea. You do have to be tough on people smugglers, and you do have to make it unattractive to try and come to Australia in that method. Otherwise, there'll be more and more people tragically dying at sea, and quite a few did under the last Labor government. I am a first generation Australian, and I fully understand how great a country Australia is, and my grandparents are Holocaust survivors, and they came out here through legal means. So I know how great a country this is, but I really think if we are debating this, we do have to remember the reason why we are being tough on asylum seekers who do seek to come through the methods, through leaky boats. And we certainly need to prevent multiple deaths at sea that we had prior to 2013. Thank you.
Councillor Olive.
I beg to differ with the councillor. I think that since Tampa, asylum seekers have become a political issue that has... I think that since Tampa, asylum seekers have become a political issue that has served a particular side of politics, and I think that the way that it's been dealt with is to try and hide asylum seekers away. There has been no attempt at really making a middle, at a middle path, where, you know, sort of, that punitive actions against asylum seekers who are called illegals, as I pointed out previously unjustly, have been demonised. First of all, there was the sending of asylum seekers/refugees to Manus Island and Nauru, and out of sight is out of mind. There was every attempt by the government when there was evidence of asylum seekers in those places being ill and needing medical attention, that they tried every means that they could to keep them out of Australia, off the mainland, until they were forced through Medivac legislation to bring them onshore. And it's only recently that Novak Djokovic, because of his being kept in the Park Hotel, that it's shone another light on the days that were the 32 asylum seekers that have been staying there. So it's only in cases where there is some sort of light shone on the situation that concern rises amongst the Australian public. And I would say that keeping them out of the light, out of the media visibility, out of the visibility to the Australian public, that's been a large part of the federal government's motivation, rather than, you know, sort of anything to do with safety for preventing boats coming, or safety for boats at sea that are from asylum seekers. Thank you.
councillor Chapel and councillor Burst.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Very briefly to the motion, I think something like this is absolutely in the ambit of council as representatives of our local residents who want to see us showing compassionate leadership. I'm not first generation, I'm a migrant to this country, and many people in our LGA are, and they want us to be a welcoming community. We've welcomed them, we welcome the next people who are coming. Thank you.
councillor Burst.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I think it's important that if you come to the country, you come through the right channels. I prefer to see people come through the front door than come through the back door. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Beech to close the debate.
Briefly, Mr Mayor, some people don't have that luxury, unfortunately. It's now at least six months until, since the Taliban have retaken over control of Afghanistan, and if any of you have heard the reports there, it's pretty much one of the worst places to be in the world right now. Those people would give anything, whether they're coming through the front door, the back door, they really don't have an option.
Thank you. I have a point of order from councillor Hamilton.
In closing her debate, councillor Beech is raising new points of argument.
I think she's being generally relevant to the topic.
I was addressing the misinformation put forward by councillor Burst, which I can do in closing the debate, which is the point of closing a debate. Councillors, these people don't have the luxury of buying a plane ticket, coming over on a holiday. We actually have many dozens of people overstaying, actually tens of thousands of people who overstay their legitimate visas. They aren't treated in the same way as people who are genuinely desperately seeking assistance. You know, we have, anyway, I think I've pretty much said everything that's needed to be said, as have the other councillors, and I do hope you will support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
All those against? No. Okay, I declare that carried. Okay, thank you. There have been one item, and then we'll go to a short break after that. Councillor Rosenfeld would like his name as recorded against in the minute. Councillor Burst, is that you as well?
Yes.
Okay, and councillor Burst. Okay, we now move to NM 17/22, councillor Beech, reduce dumping rubbish and waste to landfill in the Randwick LGA. Councillor Beech, seconded by councillor Luxford.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, thank you councillors. I won't speak for long, it's going to be a long meeting. Look, those of us who've been on council for a while, and I'm sure even the new councillors as local residents are aware of the increasing levels of rubbish dumped around our LGA. Our staff are very diligent, you know, pretty much, you know, people call up and the rubbish is collected very, very quickly. However, the problem is, is not the length of time our waste cleaning teams are picking up the rubbish, it's the fact that other people are identifying these kind of hotspots and just continuously go and put more rubbish there, and it just becomes this sort of spot. And we probably all know places like this, and for those residents who actually, you know, live on one of these spots, it's actually really terrible. There's other residents who've been in touch, and their front window, they live in apartments, just looks out directly from their lounge room and dining room. They want to look out the window and get some fresh air and a bit of sunlight, but all they can see is an absolutely enormous pile of rubbish, which literally, you know, often, I mean, Ms Parsonage mentioned 48 hours, from what I've heard, it's actually more often like a couple of hours it starts building up again. So they are sort of just having to become like this person who's literally on the phone every other day complaining and trying to get it cleaned up. We need some, a bit of different thinking, we need to sort of have a bit of a behaviour change campaign. We do it with a lot of other things. A lot of ideas have been proposed by residents and at precinct committees, meetings that I've been to, unfortunately not West Ward ones, but some of us were invited to the Maruba precinct, and it was on discussion there. You know, at the moment, council doesn't pay for verge gardens, but maybe in some of these hotspots, if the resident wants it, council could actually plant out a verge garden, get some shrubbery there, more signage, you know, a big education campaign to actually encourage people to take, you know, to do the right thing and book a clean-up. I know, having spoken to some of the staff, you know, they're looking at things with smaller trucks that can go down into the basement car parks of some of these larger blocks and collect the rubbish from the spot. So there's lots of different ways, we just need to work with the residents and find some, you know, new approaches to this really, this problem that's kind of growing. Thanks, councillors.
Thank you. councillor Luxford.
I commend councillor Beech for bringing this motion to council. I too have been, you know, hot on the tracks of tracking down rubbish and having it removed. Unfortunately, we have in the Kensington and Kingsford area, a very high population of transient residents, a lot of development, and these people just move and dump. And, you know, in Darling Street, there's even a sign that says, "Do not dump rubbish here", you know, "Call this number, do all the right thing", and you couldn't see over that mound of rubbish. People just dumping everywhere. It's causing angst to our permanent residents, it's causing angst to councillors who are constantly having to annoy our council staff to have to, you know, get people to go and pick it all up. So it is a bit of a, you know, ongoing problem that hopefully we can try and tackle and have the rubbish situation throughout the LGA, because, you know, I have had to intervene at the South Ward as well, where rubbish is constantly dumped in favourite little dumping areas down there. So it's right across our area, and hopefully we can get some education and some better programmes happening, and, you know, a bit more of a constructive way of getting rid of rubbish. But I just do have one question. Do, I'm not sure, do we have a men's shed in our LGA?
Through to the relevant officer, which is, I assume, Mr Curiaki.
Look, to be clear, I did refer to the relevant officer, Mr Curiaki. Thank you, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, I'm not aware of one, but I am advised there is one in Dayserville, but I'm not sure that Kallura One is a men's shed or not.
Can I just maybe propose an amendment, you know, just a little one line there, that we add in, maybe a point D in section four there, that we investigate the starting of a men's shed, or something such similar, that where they work on goods and, you know, recycle stuff. There's a very good one in, where is it, in Jointon Avenue, and quite often when I pass by, I see people sitting in there, you know, and they're fixing things, they're turning the trash into treasure. So perhaps, yeah, we could investigate the start of a men's shed enterprise, whatever it is.
Thank you. Is that accepted to the mover?
Yeah, happy to include that. Thank you, councillor Luxford.
Okay, I have councillor Hamilton who would like to speak on the matter.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm supportive, I think anything that we can do to reduce rubbish is fantastic. I'd just like it noted that unwanted household items for donation or repair, it's unfortunately a little bit of an unrealistic expectation, because people are purchasing their new goods, you know, like they're not actually recycling or repairing, it's just, it's a part of our society at the moment to, more so, and I'm not saying everybody cannot, you know, recycle or repair, but I'm just saying more so, we're seeing that there's dumping of damaged white goods, and they're going. So I'm fully supportive. And for example, councillor Luxford will know the name, but there's the second-hand fridge and washing machine place next to Chairman Mount, yeah, across from the Doncaster. Well, that's gone, because...
Is the name of the...
Yes, but it's, it's an example of when there's no service, you know, when there's, sorry, there's no customer base, then you can't provide the service, and it's just an example. But I am supportive, I just wanted to make that point.
councillor Chapel.
Sorry, just very briefly, I'm quite passionate about Repair Cafes, so I'd just speak to that very briefly. I think councillor Beech has included a number of examples of existing services that exist in other council LGA's, so there's the Bower, there's Reverse Garbage, which is of course at Addison Road, there's Repair Cafe in North Sydney, which operates, I believe, once a month, where local residents go by, take their broken stuff, learn how to fix it, or just have it fixed. It's a kind of global trend that is increasing. I think as council, we're uniquely positioned to, where we have the kind of infrastructure and space at our depots and other locations, where this is an option we should scope. And we have an increasingly engaged community in the area who want to do this kind of stuff. So this is where we can, we have a unique opportunity to provide a service.
Thank you. There is a question from councillor D'Souza, then I'll go to councillor Seid. Councillor D'Souza has the first one.
Mr Mayor, to the relevant officer side, now we talk about this AWT, and it's the target set by the government. I was wondering how we were going with reaching that target, or are we ahead of the, you know, the target, the general manager or the relevant officers?
Thank you. Through to the relevant officer, Mr Clark.
Sorry, thank you. Through you, Mr Mayor, I'll have to take that question notice and provide you the metrics on that target.
Thank you. councillor Seid, your question.
Question, through you, Mr Mayor, to the relevant officer. What are the fines for illegal dumping? Do you know?
Thank you.
Just roughly, is it in the thousands or fifty dollars or something? Obviously, we don't do it that much.
Thank you. Through you, Mr Mayor, I can take that question notice. They do range from, yes, small amounts through to significant amounts, depending on the infringement itself, but I can essentially collate a few of the infringements and provide advice on that.
Another follow-up question, Mr Mayor. We were looking into CCTV cameras, like the ones at Bayside, because I've noticed the one on Beecham Road at Bayside, it's completely stopped. Now the one on the trailer, are we looking into something like that?
Through you, Mr Mayor, yes, we are working with the RIT Squad, which council is a part of, that program in identifying suitable locations and suitable technology for CCTV, but I can also confirm we're looking to meet with Bayside on that particular program in relation to what we can do under the RIT Squad program as well.
And just one last one, Mr Mayor, to the mover. I'm starting to think, and we spoke about this at the Maruba precinct, that I think we're a bit overly generous with our pickups, we've got seven free pickups, and because they're scattered all throughout the year, it seems like in the old days of having two or three scheduled pickups, the, I suppose, want for a better word, the scavengers would pick up and reuse, resell, and it actually served a purpose. Now, no one really knows when they're going to be putting out, and things that could be used or recycled are just getting dumped. So is there a thought, an investigation into whether we have been overly generous, or we might go back to the old days, or is it worth it? Or...
To the mover of the motion.
There is actually a little reference to that in the motion, I'm pretty sure. Yeah, point G, increased scheduled hard rubbish collections, is that okay? Yeah, because I agree, I think it used to be a bit, I don't know, people got used to saving it up and putting it out then.
Thank you. councillor Beech to close the debate. No, no further debate. Okay, I'll now put the motion. All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Look, councillors, it being 10:20, we have been going for three hours and 20 minutes so far, I think it's appropriate for a toilet break. The meeting will recommence at 10:30. I think it's appropriate for a toilet break. The meeting will recommence at ten thirty. Councillors, if you could start heading towards your seats, it'd be keen to get the show on the road. Councillors, if we can resume our seats, please. Councillor Hamilton, councillor Hay, councillor Seid, councillor Seid. Can we resume our seats, please? Thank you. All right, thank you. All good. Councillor McCafferty? All right. Councillor Burst. And I'm unsure whether or not councillor D'Souza has left us for the evening or not. Thank you, councillors. I reopen the meeting at ten thirty six PM. Thank you. We've now dealt with the items which have had speakers on. I will now call if there is any motion of urgent business. Councillor Veitch.
Yes, I've got two and I haven't sent through the second one yet, but that is the... Thank you, Mr Mayor. Last week, on last Tuesday, there was a large statewide strike from the Nurses and Midwives Association. A number of us attended the strike protest at Parliament House. There were nurses, midwives from hospitals representing from all over Sydney. They all had big signs, they'd been, they'd bussed in from all over Sydney, you know, Concord Hospital, Westmead Hospital, and of course, there were lots of nurses and midwives from our local hospitals, from Prince of Wales, from the Royal Women's Hospital, from Sydney Children's Hospital. And of course, these were replicated across the state. So I went and spoke to those nurses and stood with them and had a chat to them after the rally and just listening to some of their stories, which I won't repeat here, but we're, in all honesty, pretty horrifying, pretty horrified to learn that COVID patients were put in maternity wards with new mums and newborn babies, for a start. So I hope we can support this motion. It's essentially to support the campaign, or the demands of the campaign, which is for ratios. At the moment, there's no minimum nurse-to-patient ratios in New South Wales. So what we've seen is some pretty alarming situations. You wouldn't want to be a patient in a hospital in that situation at the moment, and it places huge stress on the nurses. There have been a lot of people resigning. And, you know, a pay rise, nurses haven't been given a pay rise for the last couple of years. But actually, the really main thing they were asking for at that protest was the ratios.
Yes, I was just, sorry, there's a point of order from councillor Hamilton.
Mr Mayor, we need to vote whether we believe that this motion is urgent before councillor Veitch gets a chance to put her argument forward.
Councillor Hamilton is correct, and I was actually going to speak to that, so... Is it a point of order, councillor Hay?
It's, as you may know, my wife is a nurse, I should declare a pecuniary interest in this matter and leave.
No? You can, it's very tangential, it's very tangential. Okay. Councillor Veitch has outlined why it is considered as urgent business. Look, I do also consider it as urgent business in light of the fact that it's time pressing for the pandemic. I will now call a vote of councillors as to whether or not we will consider this as urgent business and allow councillor Veitch to move this motion. All those in favour of considering this as urgent business, say aye. All those against? Okay, there's a division. Mr Kelly, if you could pull up the... There's a point of order from councillor Hamilton.
I'm sorry, I don't believe I understand the significance of the urgency. As it was explained, you just overrode the vote and you stated that you believed it was urgent and we went straight to the vote. But I don't understand the urgency. The only point that you made was considering the pandemic.
Look, thank you, councillor Hamilton. On a matter of procedure, to consider something, a matter is urgent, it needs to be considered as urgent by the chair and there needs to be a vote of council to consider it as urgent. I consider it as urgent in light of the fact that there is an ongoing pandemic and there is a particular stress and, you know, there's concern around the health system. That is a matter for me as the chair. It's now a matter for councillors to also vote on it, and I will continue through to call a vote on the matter, beginning with councillor Hamilton. Councillor Hamilton?
No.
Councillor Pandefini? Councillor Nielsen? Councillor Veitch? Councillor Hay?
I'm sorry, perhaps make this point, I don't understand why I'm not allowed to declare a pecuniary interest on this matter.
You are allowed to.
Thank you.
It's a matter for you, but I would walk out now if you were.
Yes, I declare pecuniary interest on the grounds that my wife and several members of my extended family work in the health sector.
Okay, thank you, councillor Hay. Mr Kelly, do you have that noted in a minute? Yep, councillor Luxford? Councillor Chappell? Councillor Rosenfeld? Councillor Olive? Councillor McCafferty? Councillor Wilson? Councillor Seid? Councillor Burst? Councillor D'Souza?
Against.
And the mayor, Mr Parker, is for. Declare that carried. Councillor Veitch, would you now like to move your motion?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I've already spoken briefly. Look, we're all aware of the huge pressure our hospital system has been placed under. You know, obviously, we have these three, three major public hospitals serving many in our community. We've probably all been there. The nurses, hearing them speak was, hearing them speak at those rallies, hearing that firsthand testimony to what they've been going through is horrifying. to what they've been going through is horrifying. Nurses who were devastated that they had promised families of COVID patients in ICU that they would not be alone when they passed away, but because the nurses were simply too busy, you know, patients are actually having to pass away without a loved one or even a nurse able to attend to them. Nurses are highly stressed out, they're leaving in droves because the pressure is just too high. I acknowledge that we're getting some new hospital infrastructure in our LGA, which is wonderful, but we do need the nurses, this is what they keep saying over and over. We need to support these crucial frontline workers who live in our LGA, travel to our LGA to work, and give that support and support their aspirations to be fairly remunerated and supported to keep us all safe. Thank you.
councillor Sedg is the second up before I call councillor Sedg. Could I just remind all councillors that it is 10:43, we have a significant business paper to get through. Councillors, if you do have a view, you do also have the opportunity to simply vote for or against the motion after having heard a speaker on it. councillor Sedg is the second up.
Mr Mayor, I'd just like to commend the mover for this motion and commend the nurses for the job they do. Thank you.
Thank you, are there any councillor Burst?
I'd like to call for an amendment to the motion. That the nurse, the nurse, the patient quotas were actually implemented by, when a deal was done with the unions and Labour back in 2010. So, I'd like that added, that the quotas were actually done by a state Labour government back in 2010.
councillor Veitch, do you accept that amendment?
I can't, no, I won't.
Thank you. councillor Burst, do you still seek to move that amendment?
Yes.
Okay, do you have a second to that amendment, seconded by councillor D'Souza? Is there anything further you need to say on it, or have you already said it?
I've said...
Thank you very much, councillor D'Souza on the seconding on the amendment, thank you. Is there any further debate on the amendment? Okay. councillor Nielsen, again to the amendment.
If the Labour Government were in power, we wouldn't be having this ridiculous problem with nurses that we're having. Things would be a lot better.
Thank you, there being no further speakers on the amendment, I will now put it. All those in favour? All those against? I declare that lost. Okay, we now move back to the motion from councillor Veitch. Are there any further speakers? Okay, there being no further speakers, councillor Veitch, I assume you don't want to close the debate? Thank you, I'll now put it, all those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Okay, councillor Veitch, second item of urgent business.
I've sent it through to Mr Kelly, I hope he's got it. I just sent it through a few moments ago.
While he pulls that up, could you please just explain to the meeting why the motion is urgent?
This is very short, we've had a lot of discussion and motions, both at this meeting and previous terms, about the No More Incinerators campaign. I've discovered recently that there's an opportunity to put forward a late notice of motion to the local government, New South Wales Special Conference. And so, this motion is simply delegating the mayor and general manager to draft a motion to put to the special conference in consultation with a representative from No More Incinerators, supporting, you know, highlighting the issues with the waste-to-energy incinerators.
Thank you councillor Veitch, I consider that as urgent, I'll now call for a vote of council on the matter. All those in favour? All those against? I declare that carried, councillor Veitch, if you'd now like to move your motion.
Thank you, I think everyone's well aware of the issues at hand, and this is simply bringing it forward to the state government at the state conference.
Okay, thank you, and am I right in saying councillor Luxford, you've put out your hand to second it? Okay, councillor Luxford seconds it. councillor Luxford, do you have anything to say? Okay, are there any further speakers? Okay, there being no further speakers, councillor Veitch, I take it that you don't mean to... Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. All those in favour? All those against? I declare that carried. Thank you. There being no further urgent business, I will now move to mayoral minutes. Thank you. What I will do is, I note that these have been circulated previously, I'll start with MM1/22, Financial Assistance and Donations, January to February 2022. That is contained in your paper, so I have nothing further to add on this particular matter. Are there any further speakers? Okay, there being no further speakers, I declare that carried. MM2/22 has been dealt with. MM3/22, Randwick Girls' High School Mayor's Awards, I commend my mayoral minute to the floor. Are there any further speakers? Okay, there being no further speakers, all those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. MM4/22, I commend the mayoral minute, all of the details are contained therein. Are there any further speakers? Okay, there being no further speakers. MM4/22, Recognising Greek Independence Day 2022, councillor Rosenfeld.
Okay, I fully support this mayoral minute, Mr Mayor, and I'd like to also acknowledge the contribution the Greek community has given to this LGA and to Australia altogether. I'd also like to see possible, coming up is Israel's Independence Day on the 4th of May, where Israel will celebrate 74 years since it's came to be. And perhaps the council could look at celebrating that closer to the event, thank you.
Thank you councillor, there being no further speakers, I commend... There being no further speakers, I commend my mayoral minute to the floor, all those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. I now go to the supplementary mayoral minute, MM5/22, responding to the recent coastal fatalities at Little Bay. I will very briefly speak to this. Look, I acknowledge, as I did in my previous remarks, that there were two very significant tragedies along our coast. One, recently with Mr Simon Ellis, who died in very horrific circumstances under a shark attack, as well as two individuals, Peter and Mann, who drowned after being swept off the rocks in late January. The things which I'd like to draw to your attention involve the program between the Department of Primary Industries, Surfing New South Wales, and Rural Adversity Mental Health, advertising the community drop-in centres, as well as the urgency of a full review of the related signage of rock fishing, as well as rescue devices along our coast, including angel rings and TUI rescue tubes. I note that there are several other motions relating to water safety. It is my intention for council to resolve, to pursue this and this to be council's course of action in responding to these very tragic deaths, and the other items to be considered in light of, if hopefully passed, this resolution. In light of that, I commend this mayoral minute to the council. Are there any further speakers, councillor Sedg?
Mr Mayor, I'd just like to point out, I just want to thank you for mentioning the lifeguards in your opening spiel. They were there, they were the first responders on both times, and obviously, people do not see, need to see what they do. I don't know if a lot of the public know that when they got to the father and son drowning, they tried to resuscitate the father on the back of a, because they were the first people there, on the back of a jet ski, and they tried to keep him alive till the helicopter came. Unfortunately, he didn't. But at the same time, the two lifeguards were there doing that, another lifeguard was at Marub Beach pulling people out of a rip. So, I'd just like to say, I commend you on thanking the lifeguards, they do a fantastic job. We've got the best lifeguards in Australia, and they really do it tough. And fortunately for them, sometimes they get mixed up with lifesavers, but they don't complain, and they just do their job, and they do a very good job of that.
Thank you, if there are no further speakers, I commend the mayoral minute to the floor. All those in favour? All those against? I declare that carried. Okay, just one second, I'm just after the supplementary business paper, one second. Thank you, that's CP7 and City Planning. Okay, councillors, what I propose that we do, I have been advised by Mr Kelly of some urgent items which we do need to deal with today, I know it is 10:52. What I will do is I will move down the items in seriatum, I will move the unchallenged items, and then, if there are a variety of challenged items, depending on the advice which I'll get Mr Kelly to circulate, not Mr Kelly, Mr Niven, my apologies, in order to circulate, we may actually have to reorder some of the business, just so that we can get through the time-sensitive items, and then looking at it, we may have to adjourn the other items. But I just thought I would advise you of that now, but I can't really make a call of that until I get an idea of how many items were actually challenging. Okay. So I will now move down the items of business in seriatum, starting with GM1/22... GM1/22, Draft 2022/2032 Community Strategic Plan. Challenged by councillor Veitch. Okay, CP1/22, Draft Economic Informing Strategy. Challenged by councillor Nielsen. Okay, CP2/22, Informing Strategy Inclusive Randwick. Okay, who is that challenged by? By councillor Chappell. Okay, CP3/22, Special Flood Considerations Pursuant to the Standard Instrument, Local Environment Plans Amendment Flood Planning Order. Is that councillor Veitch? Okay, could councillors just call out when you're... It's very hard to hear. Okay, so that is Veitch. Okay, CP4/22, Further Extension of Community and Business Support Initiatives. Is that challenged by councillor Nielsen? Okay, we're going to be here a long time. CP5/22, A New Approach to Rezonings. Unchallenged, okay. CP6/22, Draft Design and Place Guidelines. Challenged by councillor Luxford. CS1/22, Endangered Eastern Suburbs Banksia Scrub. Unchallenged. CS2/22, oh no, we've dealt with that one. CS3/22, Malabar Memorial Hall. Challenged by councillor Sedg. CS4/22, Marub Junction Oasis. Challenged by councillor Sedg. CS5/22, Cycleways and Bicycle Facilities Advisory Committee. Unchallenged. CO1/22, Appointment of Delegates. Okay, challenged by councillor Hamilton. CO2/22, National General Assembly of Local Government. Unchallenged. CO3/22, Investment Report. Unchallenged. CO4/22, Investment Report, December 2021. Unchallenged. CO5/22, Investment Report, January 2022. Unchallenged. Monthly Financial Report, CO6/22. Unchallenged. CO7/22, Monthly Financial Report, December. CO8/22, Monthly Financial Report. Unchallenged. CO9/22, Quarterly Budget Review. Okay, can I have someone to move the unchallenged items? Okay, moved, councillor Hamilton, seconded by councillor Luxford. Okay, thank you. All righty. A little, please. Okay, what we will do is we will start the debate on GM1/22, councillor Veitch.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I will be moving it in an amended fashion, I've sent through those amendments.
Well, while councillor Veitch is just getting ready, I'm happy to indulge you.
There's a list of amendments from councillor Veitch, do we do them one by one, or do we do them in one whole group? It's just a procedural question.
It depends on how councillor Veitch moves it. If she incorporates it into the recommendation, that's what she's moving.
Councillors might not want one particular change, and they might like the others, how do we work out which ones we...
What I can do, you either can move an amendment to strike it out, to strike out each individual item, that's probably the clearest way to do it, but it will take some time.
It's only about four or five points, and they're not actually that controversial, so...
Can I ask, if you don't mind? Just for the ease of the meeting, can I actually get another councillor to move the recommendation on the business paper, and then you just seek to amend it one by one? I just think it's far easier that way. councillor Luxford, are you happy to move the recommendation on the business paper? Okay. Do I have a seconder? Seconded by councillor Sedg. Okay, councillor Luxford? That's fine, councillor Sedg.
Right to speak at the moment.
councillor Sedg?
Happy to move on to the...
Okay, amendments.
Thank you, I'll try and go through as quickly as I can. The first one is that there's, that throughout the strategy, remove all references to 'our', when referring to Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander communities.
Okay.
There's a couple of references to the word 'our'.
Can I just ask the mover of the motion, councillor Luxford, do you accept that? Okay, thank you, and it's now incorporated in the motion? Okay.
Thank you. The next one is, and look, this one, I don't know how I feel about this, it says, throughout the strategy, reword all references to... There's a couple of references to, Randwick City has a rich and unique Aboriginal cultural history, no issue with that, with La Perouse being the only area in Sydney where the local Aboriginal community have had an unbroken connection to the land. I'm just putting forward that we would change that to, Randwick City has a rich and unique Aboriginal cultural history where the Aboriginal community of La Perouse have an unbroken connection to the land. It may be considered offensive to other Aboriginal residents in Sydney. You know, we go to Welcome to Countries and so on throughout the metropolitan area, and I believe people may dispute that, it may just be considered a bit insulting, so...
councillor Luxford, do you accept that? Excellent, moving on.
Thank you.
You can speak to it?
I know that councillor Veitch gave this ahead of time, I haven't really, sorry, spent enough time perusing it, and this is going out for exhibition. I think I would be reluctant to change the wording, because we often have used it, with La Perouse being the only area in Sydney where local have had an unbroken connection to the land, to... That's not correct, yeah, to the land is not quite corrected, to this land, or, I don't know. But because we've used the phrase so often, I guess I'd be, I personally would be reluctant to change it now before going out on exhibition, but I would be very... Yes, but I'm just saying that, yeah.
I'm only seeking to remove not the reference to other parts of Sydney. To the other parts of Sydney. So it's really only the few words, it says, with La Perouse being the only area in Sydney. The rest of it is the same. Are you able to, you know, I just don't know that anyone here is qualified to verify that other areas... I mean, I think there are plenty of other people who maintain that, I mean, if you go to a Welcome to Country in any other part of Sydney, there are other First Nations elders giving a Welcome to Country as a representative of that community, and I think they might take offence if they were to read this. And it's not in any way disputing that the Bidgegor and local Aboriginal community here have an unbroken connection to the land here, it's just simply removing a reference that other people may have actually very good grounds to dispute.
Okay, thank you, now moving on. councillor Luxford, did you want to point a clarification, or can we continue?
Yes, can we get that clarified in any way? I mean, are we, you know, like, how do we know either statement is the true and correct statement?
Okay, well, what I might ask is I will refer it through to the relevant officer to provide us with an answer on notice, is the most appropriate one, are you fine with that? Or would you prefer to answer it now? Okay, I'll throw that to the relevant officer.
Uh, thank you, Mr Mayor. Look, I cannot verify the source, um, it has been used for a number of years in in councils documentation, but um, I'd have to take that on notice and we undertake some further investigations of that.
It it's incorporated into the motion unless councillor Luxford no longer does, to be to be honest, I, look. I'm, I don't want to talk from the chair, so I I will leave it to the council in order to make a determination on it. Councillor Veitch, your next amendment.
Thank you. Um, we recognise that the traditional owners have occupied and cared for this country over countless generations and the only changes and that it was never ceded. We celebrate their ongoing contribution to the life of this area. Um, I did put the changes in bold, which might make it a little bit easier to see, it's hard to see them. Would that be possible, Mr Kelly, just to keep those changes as is in bold, it might just make it clearer? If possible.
Just for the benefit of the meeting, is, am I correct in interpreting that you seek to to insert that language?
Uh, most of it is the same, so the parts in bold.
Okay.
So the rest of it is is exactly what's there, it's not actually.
Paragraph two, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah. Councillor Luxford, do you do you accept that amendment? Okay, thank you, moving to the next item. There's a question through from councillor Hamilton.
I just wanted to ask councillor Veitch, did you speak to any of the communities about the changes that you're putting forward tonight?
Councillor Veitch?
No, I haven't. But, um, it's common language now to, I mean, if you go to any, I mean, I personally relinquished going to the community awards, which I was very disappointed to have to do on January twenty sixth, to go to the Invasion Day rally, which I go to most years. Um, and this is the language you hear if you go to Welcome to Country, if you go and see uh First Nations elders and representatives speak, so I'm simply adopting a language that I hear on a regular basis and have done so for years.
Councillor Hamilton.
With these changes, will we be consulting with the Aboriginal community to make sure that they are comfortable with?
I'll take this through to the relevant officer, councillor Kurjaki. Mr Kurjaki. I would hate to debate you, Mr Kurjaki.
Thank you, thank you, Mr Mayor. I don't know if I really want that wrong, but anyway, um, uh. Uh, thank you, yes, we will be consulting widely and including the Aboriginal community as part of the consultation, yeah.
Thank you, councillor Veitch.
Page seven, sustainable, again, if you see the parts in bold, it's just, it's just beeping this up a bit because a lot of the reference largely seemed to be to do with development and so on, so focus on our natural environment, open spaces, the extra bit is by protecting and increasing native habitat. Obviously providing enhanced access for physical recreation, we will support our community to transition to net zero emissions and reduce pollution and waste. This is part of the vision, this is part of the first page is just on the vision. So I just like the vision statement and the rest of it is the is unchanged, so there's nothing removed from this, it's just adding a couple of lines.
Councillor Luxford? Thank you, and move to the next item. Councillor Veitch?
Um, and just removing reference to Randwick race course from regional facilities.
Councillor Luxford? Okay, do you have a second if your amendment councillor Veitch? Seconded by councillor Chapel. Okay, councillor Veitch, would you like to speak to your amendment?
Uh, look, there's plenty of evidence to show that, you know, gambling and horse racing is not supported by many people in our community and so I'm not seeking to further promote it by elevating it to our council strategy.
Thank you, councillor Chapel. Okay, uh, does anyone wish to speak against the amendment? Okay, no one wishes to speak against the amendment, I will now call for a vote, all those in favour of the amendment? All those against? I, it'd be helpful just to call out, but just, I I declare that lost. Okay, thank you, um, councillor Veitch, do you have any further amendments? Okay, thank you, uh.
Any of those terms, traditional custodians, traditional owners, Aboriginal in some cases, they've been placed in lowercase and they need to be capitalized, that's the sort of standard, thank you.
Look, I think some minor typographical area editing is authorized by the general managers, that's. I think there's clearly an intention to capitalize it, so I don't think that's, it doesn't require a resolution of council. Um, councillor Luxford, there's no further debate on the strategy, you no longer cease to, um, you no longer seek to close the debate. I'll now put it, all those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Okay, uh, C P one slash twenty two draft in economic development informing strategy moved by councillor Nielsen.
I've sent an amendment through, a couple of amendments through to, um, Mr Kelly, but basically my response to the economic strategy is that there seems to be no recognition of residents in the document, which you would think would be essential if any of the outcomes are to be a success. The objective makes no reference to residents and residential amenity impacts and the need through for thorough assessment of such impacts on any extension of hours, especially at midnight, so my, um, amendment would be, um, and when I sent it through to, um, Mr Kelly, I did, I think, sort of similar idea that, um, councillor Veitch had, that I put the word that is changed in bold, so I would amend outcome one to read Randwick City Council empowers businesses to start, grow and thrive through a collaborative community culture. And, um, then with strategic direction one to one, uh, sorry, one, one point one to be replaced by what I've put forward there, undertake a mapping by twenty twenty three of local community needs for businesses in Randwick's commercial centres, to avoid a monoculture of businesses in particular commercial centres. And then outcome two, to read Randwick has a diverse economy, including night time activities and experiences. And the objective be remove the six P M to six A M reference in the objective. The reason why I suggest that is that, uh, I know we think the flavour of the month with the, uh, federal, the state government, sorry, is the twenty four hour economy, but I think sometimes that is quite daunting to our residents. So that's why I'm suggesting that we remove the, um, twenty four hour economy and put it, uh, Randwick City has a diverse economy, including, um, the night time activities. Just leave it like that and the objective be increase the night time spending. Removing the six P M to six A M reference in the objective. So just leave it simply as increase, expect, just increase spending, night time spending by ten percent. And with the strategic approach, two point one, have with the outcome for two point one to, um, have the words added, ensuring the sustainability of initiatives by not impacting on nearby residential amenity. I just think that's really pretty crucial if we're thinking about having a business or sorry, an economic strategy work, surely we need to have the economic strategy work for our community, not just our business community. Um, I don't think anybody in Randwick wants to be living in the equivalent of surface paradise or some other, you know, paradise where you have, you know, lots of excitement around the clock and blah, blah, blah. I think we do want a smaller scope of entertainment, enjoyment, variation and so on, so I think the amendments that I'm putting forward are fairly mild, but I think they will make a big difference and I think that they will be a way of addressing concerns of residents that they have been rather left out of this draft economic development. So I hope that you accept the amendments.
Is there a seconder? Seconded by councillor, um, councillor Wilson, my apologies. Um, before we go into the debate, can I just ask, in the event that these, this amended motion fails, whether or not there is an intention to foreshadow from any of the councillors to move the recommendation on the business paper? Okay, foreshadowed by councillor Hamilton and councillor Luxford. Yep, thank you, uh, the seconder on the motion, councillor Wilson. Do you want to speak? Okay, you, um, are there any further speakers on, okay, councillor Veitch with an amendment? Okay, what what I might ask, if possible, is if there is a, I mean, this is taking indulgence from the chair, but in the event that these fail, there is a foreshadowed one and then you can move them individually on the foreshadowed one with the recommendation on the business paper.
I'm hap- I'm happy to, um, well, I'm obviously hoping that people will, um, accept these amendments and if they're successful, I'm happy to, um, accept or consider the proposed amendments.
You, you, no, I do, I do understand that, the only reason why I was going to say that is in the event. Thank you. Councillor Veitch, so the reason why I suggested that is in the event that were councillor Nielsen to incorporate your amendments, it may still be the case that that fails. And what I would suggest is that you seek to move, i- i- in the event that it does fail, that you seek to incorporate those into the recommendation on the business paper moved by councillor Hamilton and Luxford. No, so do you want to move them now or do you want to wait? Okay, all right, you can move them if you like.
None of councillor Veitch's amendments are the same as these. Um, why don't we deal with these ones and then we've got a foreshadowed, um, motion that will follow this, that there will be other amendments.
It's a, it's a matter for councillor Veitch. If it is carried. Okay, fair, fair enough, and we we just may have to do it twice, that's all. That, that, that is, that's. Thank you, all right, councillor Veitch? It's up to you.
I I thank you for everyone's time, I do, I do appreciate it, uh, these are put up on behalf of the Greens councillors. Um, I've sent that through to Mr Kelly. It is unfortunate with the delayed election and the rush into it that, you know, we did have limited opportunities to discuss some of these strategies uh, in workshops and unfortunately we're now in a situation of having to debate them on the floor, so. Um, would it be okay to use the ones with the parts in bold? That would be, I think, very helpful for people, otherwise they just simply cannot see the changes. Thank you very much. The first one is simply the same, acknowledge, change to the acknowledgement of country, acknowledging that the land was never ceded, the same as per the previous strategy. And councillor Nielsen, it's just seeing if you will accept that. Thank you. Um, the next one is, uh, just a couple of additions to the snapshot of our economy, just adding on page twenty six, Randwick Ritz Cinema and Nida to add to the list of, uh, venues and organisations on that list. Um, on page twenty six, there is a list of, uh, just find page twenty six. Thank you, councillor Hey. Uh, snapshot of our economy. Uh, there's a list of of locations and it's just adding them, that benefit our economy and just adding Randwick Ritz and Nida to that list. It includes University of New South Wales and places like that. We don't have to debate it, I'll just let, if you say yes or no, we'll just get, try and get on with it. Yeah, okay, all right, we'll leave that one. Uh, thank you, actually, could I keep that? Thank you. Um, page twenty six also under sustainable, just adding an an extra sentence, we will support businesses to transition to net zero to be prepared for the impacts of climate change and really reduce pollution and waste in their operations. Just adding that.
In principle I do, it's just a question of what do we mean by support, is support too strong a word in terms of we will encourage, yes.
Can, can we change that, uh, from support to encourage? Uh, okay. Encourage. Uh, page twenty eight. Um, fifty percent, uh, just a new objective, fifty percent of businesses to be net zero by twenty thirty two. It's an objective. Okay, thank you. Um, strateg- on the same page. This is adding one word where it says, create, where it already says, create a sponsorship program for business led collaborative projects that enhance the network skills and resources and I've included the word of small businesses by twenty twenty four, that's to ensure that our council support only goes to small businesses. Rather than any business.
Thank you, there's a question, uh. Where, who's the question to?
Uh, probably to the relevant officer. So we, on page twenty eight, councillor Veitch just said increase the number of businesses by fifty percent. Sorry, was that net zero, but we've gone from twenty to fifty. Is that correct, is that the one that you're pointing out, Philippa? Okay, so a third objective. Um, can I just, can I just ask the question through to the relevant officer? If that particular objective is is, um, relevant to outcome one, I I find that they're uh, they're at odds with the objectives of this economic development plan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Outcome one is really about empowering businesses and to work with them and support them and build capacity. Um, the the objectives relating to, um, uh, supporting businesses to net zero are are something that we would need to prepare additional strategic approaches to support that objective. Um, and in councils' suite of informing strategies, um, we found that, um, those sort of environmental objectives related to business are are more suited to that strategy.
I'll add the word encourage, encourage 50% of businesses to be net zero by 2032. Still on the same page. Oh, yes, sorry, so that was, the next one was already there. Strategic approach 1.9, instead of just referring to businesses, refer to small businesses.
So you're wanting to say?
Just adding the word small, so we're not actually giving council resources to corporations, but.
Sorry, you're talking about, just to clarify.
That's okay, sorry.
Just to clarify, you're talking about 1.9?
Yes.
So 1.9 currently presently reads, create a sponsorship programme for business-led collaborative projects that enhance the network skills and resources of businesses by 2024. Where does the small go? Read.
It's on the.
Yeah, okay, so it will read resources of small businesses by 2024. I think that might be restrictive because when we've just got it as businesses, doesn't that mean either a middle-sized business, a larger business, a small business? So leaving it as businesses could be small businesses as well?
I guess the idea is that we've got limited council resources to put into these kinds of programmes and that the people that would be most benefit would be small businesses rather than larger businesses who should potentially be putting forward their own funds towards these types of projects.
I see your point, but I think that it gives us more flexibility to just leave it as businesses, but I think in reality, it probably will be smaller businesses.
We'll move on. This is a new one, 1.14. Explore ways in which UNSW can collaborate with local businesses to grow the local renewable sector and can assist local businesses to reach carbon neutrality in line with net-zero carbon emissions for the Randwick LGA by 2030. So there's clearly some, there's huge expertise at UNSW, they're world-leading. I know, we've, you know, many of us have probably met with researchers and academics there who are very keen to assist, so they would, this would be a terrific opportunity to sort of use that network.
Again, I guess my question would be, can I, sorry councillor Hamilton, I'll have to ask a question through to the relevant officer. Are we able to express this in such a prescriptive way to University of New South Wales? I mean, I think the intent is very good, but I'm just not sure whether we can be as prescriptive or adamant about exploring ways in which University of New South Wales can collaborate. Is that, are we able to say something like that, please, Mr Kuriake?
Mr Kuriake.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'll just point councillors to strategic approach 1.13, which does seek to leverage the strength of the Randwick Health and Education Precinct to foster collaborative relationships with local business networks and that provides that broader strategic approach. And the university in collaborating with local businesses in relation to local renewable opportunities, would I see, I would see as being perhaps an action that would flow from that particular strategic approach.
So I guess I won't accept in that particular point, but perhaps we can strengthen it when this goes out on exhibition and it comes back, perhaps we can explore ways of strengthening that.
Sorry to interrupt, councillor Sedd is just going to move an extension of time.
Oh, sorry.
Extension of time and a question.
Yes.
Are these, these strategies are just going out to exhibition? As a procedural motion, do they go to exhibition, come back? If the residents don't like wording, then we can hear from the residents what they'd like to change it, we could also change it ourselves when it comes back? Or do we do it now so it goes out to exhibition, all redone?
Okay. I'll pass, I'll pass that through to the relevant officer and just to clarify the question.
First question is to, we have to have an extension of time.
Okay, can I just firstly move then an extension of time, move councillor Sedd? Okay, Luxford, all those in favour, granted, thank you. I'll now refer that through to the relevant officer that we're inserting new language to go to community consultation.
Through Mr Mayor, yes, this particular strategy will be going to consultation and amendments can be made to it when it comes back to council for adoption. It's a matter for council as to whether they wish to do these now or at the next council meeting when it comes back.
Thank you, councillor Nielsen and Veitch.
I guess the argument is, is that if you're making sort of amendments, I mean, obviously you can make amendments when you come back, but this actually gives the opportunity, as time-consuming as it is, for residents to actually make a comment. So we're actually putting these out there and saying, do you agree with this or not? You know, rather than, obviously there's still opportunities later on, but this is actually bringing the residents into the picture and giving them a chance to say if they think this is a good idea. That's why we're putting them up now. And actually, it is any councillor's right to put up an amendment at any time, so.
Following the comment from Mr Kuriake, I'm not going to accept 1.14.
This is also a new one, 1.15, work with First Nations communities. Okay, or 1.14, work with First Nations communities for economic empowerment by prioritising First Nations control of programmes and businesses. Thank you. Page 29.
Thank you, councillor Sedd.
I just want to ask a question, if you could just clarify exactly, is that council programmes and council businesses or just businesses in general, their businesses?
I think this amendment was put up by councillor Chapel, so councillor Chapel respond.
Sorry, thank you for the question. Through the Chair, I think just when council is looking at supporting businesses, that it should prioritise these principles in doing so.
And just to clarify, it is a new 1.14?
Thank you, everyone, I do appreciate your time. Page 29, a new one, 2.11, explore festival ideas that employ small business creators, for example musicians, artists, writers and so on.
Surely we say that somewhere else, don't we? I mean, I can't believe we don't. If we don't, we've got to put it in, but it must be said somewhere else, surely.
It's actually something we're really trying to achieve in West Ward, to reactivate that area and I'm sure other wards as well. So it's actually nice to recognise that.
I'll accept that one, I take the point as councillor Hamilton said, it's set in more general ways, but let's not, let's say it explicitly, so let's accept that one. Yep.
Thank you very much. Page 31, just literally adding three words where it says strategic approach 4.2, and it's talking about exploring partnerships with UNSW, the health precinct and so on, and we've literally just added NIDA and also adding supporting cultural events because there are opportunities, not just for exploring, you know, science and so on with this area, there's actually a lot of cultural things we could do and again, you know, that's something we're really trying to achieve, working with NIDA and some of the arts faculties in UNSW.
I'm happy to accept.
Thank you. Page 31, again, strategic approach 4.6. I'm just making this a little bit more general, during the councillor workshop I did raise concerns about promoting events at Centennial Park and so on, so all I'm doing is removing any of the specific references in here, so it would just read as explore partnerships with event venues or organisers to connect people attending major events with local businesses by 2024.
Councillor Sedd.
Mr Mayor, I have to object to that one. Included in there is Mardi Gras, this Saturday we've party with Mardi Gras for the rainbow flag down at Coogee, so that would go for a start. And there's many more things that we do with both the racecourse and Centennial Park, so I think it should just remain the way it is.
Yeah, much as I'm not a huge fan of a lot of relationships with the racecourse, I think let's put it out on exhibition and see whether we can tighten it up a bit.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Page 31, 4.4, change Indigenous to First Nations.
Sorry, I just wanted to make it clear, I didn't accept the amendment to 4.6, yeah.
Yeah, so page 31, 4.4, change Indigenous to First Nations. 4.4.
Sorry, wouldn't it be businesses? If I accept that, wouldn't it be changed to First Nation businesses? It's not just business, right? I know, but I think it's incorrect there where we currently say business, it should be businesses, so you might as well change the two. That's what I'm just suggesting.
Thank you councillor Nielsen. The last one, you'll be relieved, just a new 4.9 on the same page, 31. Explore partnerships with UNSW and NIDA to connect students, staff and visitors with local businesses and town centres by 2023.
Happy to accept. Do we need a date? I suppose we always have target dates, don't we? Yeah, okay.
Look, thank you councillors, I'm actually now going to leave the Chair, councillor Chapel. If you could take the Chair, I need to contribute to this particular debate. Thank you. Thank you.
Look, thank you councillors, I note that we have had an extensive debate with an inclusion of various amendments and the moving of the report in an amended fashion. The decision which we have in front of us, first and foremost, is to put a document on public exhibition, including a document which, if we resolve tonight, which will have implications on the community strategic plan, which we've already resolved to place on public exhibition. My strong recommendation in the light of the fact that we've been thoroughly briefed on this particular matter, I note that there is extensive confusion as to the nature of these amendments and the fact that we will actually, once this comes back from public exhibition, have the ability to amend the final wording of these particular strategies with no consideration as to, one, what the impact of these particular amendments would be, but also to the fact that councillors have had very little prior notice as to this and inability to consider their impact in consultation with staff. My strong recommendation would to be to vote no on the amended motion and to support the foreshadowed motion to move the recommendation on the business paper. If there are any particular items which are suggested in these amendments, I would suggest that prior to this coming back for consideration and adoption by council, we negotiate it with colleagues and we move a strategy which includes some of the suggested amendments. Some of the suggestions in these amendments make total sense to me, some do not, and my recommendation is what would be cleaner is councillors now with notice consider each individual one, but in order for us to do that, we need to vote no on the amended motion in front of us and to vote in support on putting on public exhibition the recommendation on the business paper. Thank you councillors, and I accept that this is an unorthodox move in your first council meeting.
Sorry, excuse me, can I just ask a question? If the mayor leaves his seat to raise a point, can he then vote as mayor on that point? Or does he have to relinquish his casting vote and vote as a normal councillor? I just, I think that would be a courtesy.
Through you, through you, Madam Chair, no, that wouldn't be part of the code of meeting practice. The mayor generally does not debate from the Chair, but is entitled to come back to the Chair.
The mayor did ask, oh, thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Councillors did extend the courtesy, the deputy mayor did extend the courtesy to the mayor to speak to the motion, which is completely fair. However, the mayor now seeks to use his position as Chair to place a casting vote on these amendments, having spoken to them, which is fairly unorthodox. And so I would ask that we vote on whether the mayor is able to exercise his right to place a casting vote on this.
But there won't be need for a casting vote, we're 15 councillors, aren't we? Sorry. Councillor Nielsen, can we just get some advice from the general manager on this?
Through you, Madam Chair, that is, that is not part of the code of meeting practice, nor is it part of the code of meeting practice for councillors to determine what they vote on in regards to the mayor retaining the Chair's position. And it was noted that there are 15 around the table, so there should be, there shouldn't be a need for a casting vote in any case.
Sorry, I don't believe there's anything to be put there. Were you, sorry, councillor Hamilton, did you have a question?
I want to speak in response to the mayor's comments. Sorry, I close the debate. I'm going to close the debate.
Thank you councillor Nielsen in closing debate.
I am closing the debate and I do not agree with the point that you put forward, which I think should be, I should be able to respectfully address you sitting down here with the hoi polloi, but here you are up on the grandstand. However, I think that we have a perfect right to have put through the, forward the amendments that we have and certainly the amendments I put forward, and I tried to convince you and I'm very sorry that I haven't, but perhaps you're the only person I haven't convinced, but the point is, in this document, we have totally forgotten our residents, all we're talking about are businesses. And I think it's highly important that we think of residents and all I'm asking with the amendments that I have put forward is for more respect for the residents. So I am entirely confident that the recommend, that the amendments that I have put forward are well thought out, they've come from community consultation that I have had and responses I have had already from hard-working community members who are in fact rather incensed, and that's putting it mildly, because residents have been totally forgotten in all of this. So I am very, very forcefully suggesting that the amendments that I have put forward and I have thoughtfully accepted the amendments that have been put forward by councillor Veitch and her team, and I think the amendments that we've put forward are totally reasonable and that councillors should put it, should accept these amendments that have been put forward in this way and then we can put that out on exhibition and then people can have their say on these. So don't talk to Mr councillor D'Souza like that, just vote yes for the motion that has been put before you now. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Nielsen has now closed the debate on the matter. I will now call for a vote. I'm assuming there will be a division, is that correct? Okay, all those, okay, so Mr Kelly, we'll go straight to division.
Okay, all those, okay, so Mr. Kelly, we'll go straight to division. Mr. Kelly? Okay, thank you. Counselor Hamilton? No? Yep, Counselor Pandafini? Counselor Nielsen? Counselor Beach? Counselor Hay against? Counselor Luxford? Counselor Chapel? Counselor Rosenfeld? Counselor Olive? Counselor McCafferty? Counselor Wilson? Counselor Seid? Counselor Burst? Counselor D'Souza? And the mayor is against, I declare that lost. Thank you, Counselor Hamilton as the mover of the foreshadowed motion and Counselor Luxford.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move the business paper accordingly and I would not like to speak on it. And I hope that we don't have to debate about it.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Luxford. Okay, are there any further speakers, Counselor D'Souza? No, okay, there being no further speakers. I will now put the matter, all those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried, thank you. Okay, we now move to the next item, CP slash two slash twenty-two, informing strategy, informing inclusive Randwick, Counselor Chapel.
Sorry, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe a brief number of amendments were circulated to Mr. Kelly on this strategy. I'd like to foreshadow. Sorry, David, they were sent by Counselor Beach, if that's assistance.
Just a quick point of order. We received an email from Mr. David McNeven at ten fifty-three PM regarding time-dependent reports. Is it the intent of the council to debate all the time-dependent reports tonight and into the early hours of the morning?
It's a matter for the council. As the chair, what I intend to do is to get through as much business as possible, at which point we'll need to make a decision as to whether or not to debate all of those items or to adjourn the meeting and potentially call another meeting. The advice that I've received and I'll go through to the relevant officer is that there are items which have been identified as not being able to wait until the March council meeting. So there may be the need for an additional extraordinary meeting.
When would the additional extraordinary meeting be?
Would be within the next week. Thank you, Counselor Chapel.
Just very briefly, just recognizing this strategy is not going for consultation. This is about to be finalized. So this is kind of a last opportunity to make some amendments. The amendments we're proposing are very brief. I was not involved in the development of this strategy. So I, I apologize if some of the amendments that are proposed have been canvassed at length already and decisions come to them. But I did feel obliged as new councillors that we should have a very brief say on this. I think the principle in this strategy that relates to empathy is, does not contribute significantly to the strategy and is not actually an appropriate principle to guide the development of a council strategy. There's a typo one, which I believe can be handled at general manager level. So I'm happy to pull that. Counselor Beach, I believe, the diversity framework. Strategic approach one. Sorry, okay, so it was develop a diversity framework. I think this is in response to the significant feedback by the community on the original draft of this count, of this policy that said that it didn't actually mention them in any way. So this is an attempt to mention them in a, in an enabling way in the sense that a strategy will be put in place so that they actually read the strategy and feel like something that is being done specifically. The what's on proposal at one point five is one that has been canvassed at council extensively, including on our strategic planning day. So this seeks to implement that. The new one point one three makes a plan for dual naming and signage that appropriately reflects First Nations and colonial heritage of this area and could make, go some way to fixing the fact that almost every street in this LGA is named after a man. The new one point eight A involves investigating the availability of non-council halls, facilities and spaces to be used for community activities just to expand our stable. We don't have as much infrastructure as some other LGA. So this would be an opportunity to leverage the stuff that is actually out there. Page forty-two, strategic approach three point one. I'm not actually sure, is that a new point? Sorry, Counselor Beach.
This strategic approach is already there, but because it's a study and update on safer, the safer Randwick plan, I thought it would be appropriate to add a reference to women and LGBTQI residents because for some reason. And we've just replaced the term multicultural with carled communities. Happy to go back to multicultural, but many people do use culturally and linguistically diverse. But the, in, in reality, the only two changes, there's a two additions within our safer Randwick plan to include reference to women and LGBTQI residents.
Thank you. Just before we move to that, so do we have a seconder? So seconded by Counselor Beach, Counselor McCafferty.
I just wanted to move an amendment to the amendment and just say that if we are going to be very correct, it should be LGBTQIA plus.
Counselor Chapel, do you accept that?
Can I speak in clarification?
Through to the mover of the amendment?
Of the amendment, yes. What, what? I, I'm not aware of anybody group that uses that. And as a bisexual person, I feel like I would know. So what does the A stand for?
Okay, thank you. No, that's fine. Are you seeking to move that or you're, it was just a suggestion? Okay, thank you. Are there any further speakers? Okay, there being no further speakers. Counselor Chapel, I wish, don't assume you wish to close the debate? Okay, all those in favour? All those against? Yeah, I'll have to call a division, it's not clear. Mr. Kelly, division?
Not really, no. If this is actually not going out to exhibition and we've just changed it, does that mean it has to go to exhibition?
No, no, thank you. All right, let's go through, Counselor Hamilton? Counselor Pandafini? Counselor Nielsen? Counselor Beach? Counselor Hay? Against? Counselor Luxford? Counselor Chapel? I'm assuming it's four. Counselor Rosenfeld? Counselor Olive? Counselor McCafferty? Counselor Wilson? Counselor Wilson? Counselor Wilson? Counselor Wilson is four. Counselor Seid? Counselor Burst? Counselor D'Souza? Against? And the mayor is four? Declare that carried. Okay, moving along. Challenged by Counselor Beach, CP three slash twenty-two, clause five point two-two, special flood considerations pursuant to the standard instrument, LEP Amendment Flood Planning Order. Counselor Beach? Does anyone have their microphone on?
Thank you. Just a question through to the relevant staff person. I have been having a few discussions about this. I think there is, well, I certainly had some concerns. I, I was hoping if, 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 is it possible to defer this and get a councillor briefing? Or will that disrupt a timeline?
Mr. Kuriaku?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Department of Planning are seeking a resolution from council so that they can put the, the draft state policy on exhibition in March. So we may not be able to be included in that exhibition if we need to wait for, for the council meeting.
Thank you. Counselor Beach?
What would be the implications of not being included in the exhibition? Could we, if we were to get a briefing, could we still adopt this at a later date into our LEP in whichever way that council resolved? Or would it mean that it was not, there was no ability to then incorporate this into our LEP in whichever fashion council resolved?
Mr. Kuriaku?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. That, that may be possible, but that'd have to be with the agreement of the department in terms of modifying our LEP. And there would be perhaps a requirement to exhibit this separately as well, which may impact with the timing of the LEP. Because the whole purpose of the state involvement planning policy is to make it clear what the council's provisions will be in relation to flooding. And that's the process they are following.
Thank you, Counselor Beach.
One more follow-up question. So given that our LEP is likely to go on the business papers in March, as I believe that may be correct. A briefing in the next week or so, surely that, yeah, I guess we couldn't it then come back to the council meeting in March and then go on exhibition as part of the LEP?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as I've indicated, it's the Department of Planning that's undertaking the exhibition of the state policy. If you were seeking to have it included in council's LEP, we would have to seek a direction from the Department of Planning and the Minister to do that. And the gateway determination's already been issued for the LEP.
Thank you, Counselor Nielsen.
Well, I agree with Counselor Beach's concerns, but I take on board the deadline that we're under, unfortunately. So I would foreshadow that I will move the recommendation as per the business paper. However, I would also like to add a point C. And that is that council has received a briefing on this. So, and, and I think it's a pity that with the time at hand, which I know we've been pressed and so on. But this is an important issue and I think we could have been given a bit of briefing at this at another time. So that's what I'm foreshadowing, thank you. So yeah, are you moving the recommendation on the business paper then? Because otherwise, if you're not, what I'm proposing, foreshadowing is that I will move the recommendation on the business paper with a point C that we receive a briefing on this matter.
No, I was going to move it excluding point B so that we just adopt it as is not excluding early education, boarding houses and so on. Is there, do I have a seconder? Just for point A only? Thank you.
Counselor Luxford is the seconder. Okay. Counselor Nielsen, because you proposed, are you foreshadowing it or are you just moving an amendment?
Well, I'm, I'm foreshadowing that should the motion proposed by Counselor Beach, seconded by Counselor Luxford, not be successful, I will be moving the recommendation as per the business paper with the point C being that we get a briefing as soon as possible.
Yep, that's fine, okay. Is there any further debate on the motion as amended, as proposed by Counselor Beach? Okay. All those in favour? All those, all those against? I declare that. It's, sorry, I heard the word division. In, in the event that there's any debate, that's why we have a division, we'll call a division. Yeah, okay.
Sorry, point of order, that was clearly carried.
Counselor Beach, there's a really simple way where I can clarify that and that's by having a division. As the chair, I'm unclear as to whether or not that was carried. There's a beautiful way where we can resolve that by having a division. Counselor Hamilton?
Against?
Counselor Pandafini? Counselor Nielsen? Counselor Beach? Counselor Hay? Four? Counselor Luxford? Counselor Chapel? Counselor Chapel is four, I believe. Counselor Rosenfeld? Counselor Olive? Counselor McCafferty? Counselor Wilson? So I can't hear you, Counselor. Okay, against? Counselor Seid is no longer in the meeting. Counselor Burst? Counselor D'Souza? Against? Okay, and the mayor is against? Okay. Declare that lost. Counselor Nielsen?
I'll move it as per the business paper.
Thank you, seconded by Counselor Hamilton. Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers. There's a question from, I almost got it. There's a question from Counselor Luxford.
Yeah, just through to the relevant officer. Clarification as to why the point B is there.
Mr. Kuriaku?
And why these, these are all excluded? You know, I worked in a building that even had a floodgate in it in Kensington. So I just don't understand the exclusions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, the purpose of clause five point two-two is to introduce special flood considerations for flood-prone land that is also between those levels and the probable maximum flood. So that's an additional provision for sensitive and hazardous uses. And it's, I don't, it's there to try and to determine that there is safe evacuation and that there is consideration of the probable maximum flood. So our assessment of these type of properties in our, in the context of the Randwick City area is that they are mostly around the one in one hundred year flood level. So that's consistent with the approach that we've been applying to these types of developments. Now, boarding houses are a form of accommodation now under the new state planning policy, which are to be rented at affordable housing levels and to be controlled by committee housing providers. And certainly with educational care establishments, childcare centres and the like, it was considered that the additional restrictions that would be placed on the flood studies, the additional work in terms of the flood studies and the experts that would be, need to be engaged to provide those assessments of safe evacuation would be onerous for those types of developments. Now, also, a lot of the boarding house developments and mixed-use properties and developments and where there is multi-story, there is less of a risk associated with those properties.
Thank you. Mr. Seid, can I just get a brief extension? Thank you, can you move it?
Yeah, I'll move it as such at the time.
Okay, I'll second it. All those in favour? All those against? Okay. Thank you, was there any further speakers? No? Okay, there being no further speakers on the motion? Sorry, Counselor Hay?
Ultimately, I'd like to speak against the motion. The, the reality is of particularly Kensington and Kingsford, it's the, it's at the joint junction of three different flood areas. And there is, there is an issue if we overcrowd the area with an excessive boarding houses and hostels. There's a problem there with how do we evacuate large numbers of people in an emergency? And I think it is right that we consider mass evacuation in the event of a crisis when we're looking at planning.
Thank you, are there any further speakers? There being? There being no further speakers, Councillor Nielsen. Just to, I just note, there's not an identified speaker. I believe that's Councillor Luxford as the second up. Is that correct? Who, can I, no, it was Lux, sorry, it was Nielsen-Hamilton, is that correct? Yeah, sorry, it was Nielsen-Hamilton. Okay, there being no further speakers. I'll now put it to a vote. All those in favour? All those against? No? Are you seeking to have your name recorded as voting against? No, I declare that lost. Okay, thank you. Councillors, we will move to one further item, and then I'll have discussion as to what the approach to go from here. CP 4/22, Further Extension of Community Support Initiatives. I believe that is challenged by Councillor Nielsen.
It's, it's a question. I'm, I'm happy to move it, but the question is in terms of point D, and I suppose actually I would prefer to move point D in an amended way, delegates authority to the general manager in consultation with the mayor to approve any urgent changes. And I suppose I should have been more respectful, but we're in a hurry. The question is, why does it have to be just the general manager? I think that in this instance, because it's a community thing, it's important that the mayor be included.
Through to the general manager?
Mayor's not, I mean, the general manager's not unhappily. Good.
I note to the meeting, the mayor, the, the general manager's not unhappily. Okay, you moved the recommendation on the business paper. Do I have a second up? Seconded by Councillor Burst. Okay, there being no further speakers. I assume Councillor Nielsen doesn't want to close the debate. All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Okay. Look, councillors, we still have several items to get through tonight. Look, I can't see any chances of us getting through all of the notices of motion. The option which we have in front of us is we can continue to push on for a period of time. I think it's probably unrealistic for us to do that for much more than half an hour to an hour. There are various time-sensitive notices of motion which will need to be dealt with in either the coming days or, or potentially weeks. My suggestion is that we carry on for a further half an hour, but that there be an extraordinary meeting to be considered in line with the general manager once we look at the individual items. It may be as soon as Thursday, but, but we need to actually can, to identify a date. So I just thought I'd give you the heads up with that, and we'll now continue through the business. Okay. CP 55, that was done. CP 6/22, Draft Design and Place SEP, Council Submission, Challenged by Councillor Luxford. Councillor Luxford, could you please turn on your microphone?
Yeah, it's, it's a question regarding page 162, the green travel plan. Can you actually give us clarification on what that exactly is? And are we able to remove that out of the paper discussion paper thing? Yeah.
Thank, thank you, Mr Mayor. A green travel plan is used when a proponent is seeking to limit the amount of parking to be provided on the site by looking at sort of demand-related initiatives to try and reduce the amount of people actually using a vehicle to go to the, to the particular property that is subject to the development. And it can work through incentives or enhancements of public transport or active transport uses around the property. And it's, it's a means by which the urban design guidelines would seek that that be monitored over a period of time and look at changing of the behaviour to see if it is effective. So it's largely around those sort of initiatives.
Well, we know it's, it can be a total waste of time because a developer will get the approval for a building because they don't need much parking because the bus goes right by, but then we get the changes to the bus and there ain't no bus anymore, but the developer hasn't provided any parking. So really, the green plan, travel plan is not terribly successful. I agree, it's a great goal, but the point is, I think that we would all agree that we still need parking because we've got too many problems with people not being able to park.
Can I, can I just clarify for the benefit of the meeting, because Councillor Luxford asked a question, what it is that you're actually moving?
Well, I was seeking to see if this thing can be taken out. I mean, it's useless in, in the fact that already we have buildings being built without car, adequate car space, and we're basing that all on the public transport that we don't have. So I just don't understand how this all works and why it should be there. Because right now, the bus network has gone to crap in our area. I've got people working with me that come from Maruba to Ramick are changing three buses to get to work in the morning, and they, they just don't get there on time. The light rail is running at Sunday timetables, one every whenever, and we're basing these buildings, as Councillor Nielsen said, you know, you've got a bus stop outside, and that means no parking. So I just find it ridiculous in the least that such a, you know, it's called a green travel plan when more cases than none, you'd be flat out trying to get anywhere.
Thank you. Just to clarify for the benefit of the meeting, that you are moving to strike out the language in council submission which references support to the green travel plan allowing the removal of parking. Okay, can I just clarify that that is clear to everyone? That Councillor Luxford is moving the report, removing any references to the green travel plan, as in removing any references to the support of the green travel plan in council submission as it relates to the removal of parking. Okay. Are there any further speakers on the amended motion? Councillor Chappell.
Sorry, just very briefly, the, the submission is not unqualified in its support for the introduction of the green travel plan. It recognises that this is likely to be a part of the SEP and that it provides a process for creating conditions that then apply to developments. I, I think it is desirable that we are able to apply conditions to developments such as this. The condition, the submission also raises the lack of clarity around, you know, enforcement and things like that, which I think is substantially what Councillor Luxford is addressing here. So perhaps we could just maybe tweak that language in there to be slightly more critical because I, I, I think the language otherwise appropriately reflects that, that, that this is a new clause that we have to engage with in some way. I don't, we can just not talk about it.
That, that's a comment or a suggestion through to Councillor Luxford?
It is indeed. I'm not proposing any amendments.
Okay. Are there any further speakers? Okay, there being no further speakers. I will now put it. Can I just clarify who the second up is, if that's okay, before we do that? Seconded of this proposed amendment. Seconded by Councillor Sedd. Okay. All those in favour? All those against? I, I need an I or an A, but I declare that lost. Okay, thank you. Sorry, I declare that carried. Thank you. He's late. Thank you. All right, we'll now move to the next item of business, CS 3/22, Malabar Memorial Hall DA Design Proposal. Councillor Sedd.
In the interest of time, I'll go through this as quick as possible, Mr Mayor. I'm going for the recommendation. I just need to ask a question to the relevant officer through you. Is this, this design is very brutalist, and I'm sure it's not the original design we saw four years ago, whenever. Has this been changed at some stage? And is this a final design because it's, or is this going out to consultation because it's not very nice?
Mr Clark.
Sorry, through, Mr Mayor, I'm not sure I understand the, the question. So.
Originally, when this was being proposed to be refurbished, we were going to remove the, sort of the 70s style facade, we were going to go back to the old style hall, which I think was traditional in the 30s, et cetera. There was a, we were going to have the lift for disabled people, but when I saw this drawing, it looks very brutalist. It's very, it's very, it doesn't seem very modern for what we're trying to achieve. I just need to know, has this changed in the last few months? I, I don't recall ever seeing a design like this in our discussions for the last four or five years.
Sorry, through you, Mr Mayor, I can confirm that the change in the design was in regards to the addition of a accessible toilet in the library itself, in addition to the hall. I don't believe the facade has changed from a previous design.
Councillor Sedd.
I'll go by the recommendation, but.
Okay.
No, I just wanted to go back to the original hall because it looked nice.
No, no, sorry, 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 sorry. I couldn't hear you there. What is it that you were doing exactly?
I just need to clarify if that had been changed, but if it hasn't, I'll just go to the recommendation.
So you're sticking with the recommendation on the business paper?
I'm just happy to have something built after all these years.
All right. Seconded by Councillor D'Souza. Councillor Veitch. Well, actually, sorry, Councillor D'Souza first, then I'll go to Councillor Veitch, unless you have a question.
I was going to propose an amendment.
Councillor D'Souza.
I reserve my right, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Veitch.
I had some questions about this as well. I understand it did not go to a public exhibition or didn't go to a community consultation, so I'd just like to ask the mover if he would consider an amendment to place this, this on, on public exhibition. I understand the DA is about to go on exhibition, but I'm asking, I would just, I think it might be appropriate that the community gets the benefit of a, of a consultation on this.
I'd like to add that, I'll just ask the relevant officer, if we do a quick, short, sharp, just social media, four weeks' worth, does it delay in any real way?
To the relevant officer.
Yes, it delays the, the project, council. We would have to come back with a consultation, consultation outcomes of that, of that exercise. I do know this is a, an accessibility upgrade to the facility, so the impact of the community and the consultation would have limited impact on, on the actual design of, of the project.
Councillor Veitch.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Look, it's very rare that we get an opportunity to upgrade essential services such as our libraries. I completely understand the need to improve the accessibility, but I don't know that this plan is really the vision that our community would be expecting. And I think as councillors, to, to delay it by a month or more, I don't know that this is going to be there. Once this is built, it will be built. We won't be able to change it. This is our only opportunity to perhaps try and get a better design. There is already a ramp on the existing one, so that I understand there's no lift, but it is accessible in its current form. There is, there is a ramp. So, which presumably is getting used. I, I think the community deserves a say on the design of this library because I think, in all honesty, we could do better.
Can I just confirm whether or not?
Mr Mayor, I'll accept the amendment.
Okay, thank you. Is there any further debate on the matter? Councillor? Yep.
Just, just, just simply, sorry. Just simply, if you look on page 275, it says that the proposed design has been carefully considered within the existing site constraints in response to the original brickwork hidden behind the existing 1970s decorative facade. Removal of the late, later foyer addition to the front of the original Malabar Hall will allow the reinstatement of the original earlier facade as a feature within the new foyer space. And ramps are not always very accessible for, ramps are fine for some instances for people who need access assistance. Rams don't suit everyone, and a lift is far more user-friendly for people who have access issues. So I would be very reluctant to be losing the funding. What are you talking about? No, I'm not, I'm not saying that. Anyway, I would be, I'd be much happier when this going with what was originally proposed.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? Okay, there being no further speakers. Councillor Sedd, I assume you don't want to close the debate. All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Okay, we now move to CS 4/22, Maruba Junction Oasis Urban Renewal Project. Moved, Councillor Sedd.
Mr Mayor, I propose an amendment to the recommendation. Just trying to find the page. That we just go for part one, which is the $1 million grant. I don't understand why we're paying another $1 million to, by looking at the drawing. So it's $2 million for the middle of that, what we're calling the oasis, to have be cemented in a sort of pergola, I suppose. It would have been nicer with a few more trees and a few more greenery. I don't understand where the other $1 million comes into it. I think we were very lucky to get that grant in the first place for $1 million. I think we should spend the $1 million. That's what its purpose was. I don't understand why we need to spend another $1 million on, if you read the comments, I think I'm not alone with the community because they've all said the same thing. We're sort of, as we know, and as residents, we know we frequent there and we're really only greening it. I can't understand why anyone with a family would take their kids in there in between two, six lanes of very busy road to play in that little section. I think the, actually, in all things to be said, I think the original drawings, it's, I can't find the page, but it was going to be straight opposite the Pacific Square with a pedestrian crossing going straight through the middle would have made a lot more sense, but obviously there was constraints doing it that way. So I, as I said, I put this through with an amendment that we only spend the $1 million of the grant money that we have and not additional $1 million.
Given a second up, Councillor Sedd, is there a second up? Seconded by Councillor D'Souza. Councillor Rosenfeld.
I disagree with Councillor Sedd. I, I really think that we should do this stage one and stage two together and, and spend the, the total amount of money, the grant and also the money from the council budget. The Maruba Junction does need a fair bit of refurbishment, and I like the idea of, of the plans, and I believe if it's done properly, it will attract people and it will change the character of the area. So I, I fully disagree with the, with the amendment.
I have Councillor Luxford, then Councillor Chappell.
I have to agree with Councillor Sedd on this. I think that, yes, I agree, Maruba Junction needs an uplift. I think a small little thing, I don't think an oasis in the middle of Anzac Parade as such is the way to go. I did question this from the beginning because we know that it's not a very good area down there, and we know that in that little section, you know, unsavoury characters do congregate, and I question whether we would be having security 24/7. The oasis to me likens, you know, we're likening, likening this little thing to Needle Park in Zurich, which was a park where people went to purchase their drugs and inject in what was meant to be a so-called safe environment. And to me, all I can see is that this will kind of go in the same way. You know, it's already like that now, and people are not going to take their kids into an area where these characters congregate. people are not going to take their kids into an area where these characters congregate. I just think we go with the part one and scrap the rest.
councillor Chapel.
Sorry, thank you, Mr Mayor. Through you to the relevant council officer. The $1 million grant, I understand, was delivered as part of our High Street programme, so I would just like to ask whether we could realistically deliver anything with that amount of funding and whether that amount of funding is conditional on us delivering something like the project that is envisaged.
Mr Clark.
Thank you. Through you, Mr Mayor. The million dollar grant from the state government was in relation to a much smaller, reduced scope, called stage one of the total scope. That's inside the council business paper tonight. In listening and responding to the community consultation outcomes from that report, council officers continue to further investigate the possibility of stage two. And in consideration of the consultation outcomes, the impact on the surrounding businesses and the community, and then reduce costs from escalation and start establishments, it's proposed to do stage two. But should we go to stage one, it's essentially just a much, a much smaller scope of works.
Thank you. Follow up from councillor Chapel.
I just briefly then wanted to speak to the motion, which is just to say that I'm aware that in all of the community consultation that we've been doing and in all of our future planning, beautifying our town centres, sorry, beautifying our town centres has been something that has been raised repeatedly by the community and particularly Maruba Junction isn't, has been identified as a place that is unappealing and that requires some investment. This is one of the most obvious pieces of public land there that we actually have the opportunity to do something with, so I think we should support the proposal.
Did I see a hand from councillor Hay? Was, just before you get up, were there any further speakers? No, councillor Hay? Oh, okay, sorry, I'll go to councillor Hay and then I'll go to councillor Burst.
This is a question through the mayor. I was under the impression that council is attempting to support an extension of the light rail to Maruba Junction. Is that a current campaign? And does it undermine our campaign? Oh, actually, just ask that question. Are we currently campaigning to extend the light rail to Maruba Junction?
Thank you. Through to the relevant officer, Mr Kuria.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. There is a council resolution that does support the extension of the light rail to Maruba Junction. But in the South East and Sydney Transport Strategy that was prepared last year, there was no indication of that in terms of a future link as proposed by state government and no commitment of investment towards that.
councillor Hay, did you have any further comments?
Just generally speaking, it would be good to seek further clarification on that. And is it a rational strategy to proceed with stage one for now? And then, we still have the option to go back to stage two. I mean, sorry, I'll put that as a question through the mayor. Is it essential that we do stage one and two approved at the same time? Or can we approve stage one now and stage two later?
I will refer that through to the director of city services to again address that.
I'm happy to re-clarify if this doesn't answer the question, but to return to your first original question, there is no difference or ramification. Should you choose stage one or stage two for the future light rail develops, they'll both have the same impact should that corridor be activated in the future. So stage one is just a reduced scope of the total project, but it still lies within the median of Anzac Parade in the same location.
Now through to the general manager.
Through you, Mr Mayor. I might just clarify in answering your question, the difference between doing stage one as opposed to doing stage one and two is probably more an economies of scale exercise.
Thank you. Are you complete councillor Hay? Or can I go to councillor Burst?
This actually reminds me of some upgrades that happened out at Little Bay, where the two roundabouts are. That area prior to those two roundabouts being put in place and beautifying the area and making the streetscape a lot nicer, there was a lot of undesirables, a lot of dark corners. Once those areas were removed and we cleaned up the area, it became brighter, there was a lot of nice plants planted, and it changed dramatically. And I think that the same effect will happen here, that if you have the right environment, you'll create the right outcomes. Also, here's an opportunity to basically do an upgrade at 50% of what would normally cost the council to do it. So why wouldn't we take advantage of that? We've got a grant of a million dollars, the council's only going to put a million dollars towards it. So let's get something done at 50% of the cost. Makes sense, it's logical.
councillor Olive.
Just a point of information. Just looking at the diagram, it doesn't look like there's a lot of shading in, particularly in the middle of summer, in sort of where the seating is. I mean, that's the sort of thing that will, you know, sort of drive people away if there's not enough shading in the middle of the day. But otherwise, it could be a real drawcard. Sorry, that was a comment. I mean, could I get information on the amount of shading there is in the oasis project, please?
Thank you. Through to the relevant officer. councillor Olive, oh, can you please turn off your microphone?
Thank you. Through you, Mr Mayor. I'm happy to take that on notice and provide the landscape plan details through to councillors for their information. The concepts in the business paper probably don't do the landscape justice, but I do know there's a big commitment to install soft landscaping and trees in that corridor.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? Okay, there being no further speakers. Before we move, can I just ask if there is an intention of any councillors to foreshadow the recommendation on the business paper in the event that this recommendation fails? Just so I can get, there is an intention to foreshadow from councillor Chapel, okay. Councillor Sed, did you want to close the debate?
Yeah, I'll just close it very quickly on the...
Actually, sorry, there is an extension of time from councillor Nielsen. I know, I know I said we'd try and wrap it up at 12:30, but we only have the four confidential items and we'll adjourn the notice of motion. Can I have an extension of time till 1am? Yep, thank you. All those in favour? Okay, thanks. Declare that carried. Thank you. Councillor Sed.
Just to wrap it up, Mr Mayor, there was on page 280, council resolved to apply for the grant funding at a million dollars. I just, as I said before, I don't understand why I applied for the grant. We designed it for a million dollars' worth of works and then we change it and add another million dollars of rate pays money to it. I think we should just stuck to what we actually resolved for and what we applied for the grant for in the first place. Simple as that.
Thank you. I'll now call for a vote. All those in favour? All those against? Okay, there's a division. Mr Kelly.
What we're voting for is a recommendation which we have in front, that council endorsed the Maruba Oasis for the design and development and documentation of stage one works for tender. Currently, there is just stage one, but there is a foreshadowed motion from councillor Chapel in the event that this fails. Okay, all those in favour? So, so we've done this. Mr Kelly, can I have a division? Councillor Hamilton?
For.
Councillor Pandafini? Against. Councillor Nielsen? Councillor Veitch? Councillor Hay?
For.
Councillor Luxford? Councillor Chapel? Councillor Rosenfeld? Councillor Olive? Councillor McCafferty? Councillor Wilson? Councillor Sed? Councillor Burst? Councillor D'Souza?
For.
And the mayor is against. Okay, declare that carried. No, it wasn't.
You're going to have to do it again. Don't do that on close votes, Dave. You watch, they'll vote differently now. Okay, all right. Okay, councillor Hamilton? Councillor Pandafini? Councillor Nielsen? Councillor Veitch? Councillor Hay? Councillor Luxford? Councillor Chapel? Councillor Rosenfeld? Councillor Olive? Councillor McCafferty? Councillor Wilson? Councillor Sed? Councillor Burst? Councillor D'Souza?
For.
And the mayor is against, but that is lost. Sorry, that is carried. That is carried. Eight, eight for, seven against. Okay, thank you. Look, I'll, oh yeah, we now need to move to committees. That is challenged by councillor Hamilton. Committees. Yep, it's challenged by councillor Hamilton, unfortunately. You challenged it. Committees. It is challenged by councillor Hamilton, unfortunately. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I like your humour. Okay, could I please put up an amendment that I seek to appoint councillor Burst to the La Perouse Museum and Headland Trust? And if there was the opportunity to increase the council representation to four, that would mean that everyone got what they wanted. But if not, I note that there are two Labour delegates, the mayor is a Labour delegate and a Greens delegate, but there isn't a Liberal representative and councillor Burst is a South Ward councillor. And also, we've always had a Liberal representative on that particular trust, me being the one for the last term, and it's a very valuable trust to be a part of.
Just for the benefit of the meeting, can I just clarify that you are moving the recommendation on the business paper and the committee list, which was circulated by me with the amendment to include councillor Burst on the La Perouse Headland Trust?
Yes, that's correct, and thank you for adding that.
Okay, that's fine. Do you have a seconder? Okay, thank you. Councillor Luxford, did you wish to speak? With the committee list as circulated previously. Okay, thank you. There is a question from councillor Nielsen, yes?
If you don't mind. I thought that the delegate for the Sydney Coastal Councils, the alternate delegate was...
councillor Nielsen, could you stand up? I'm just getting commentary.
Sorry. I thought that councillor Chapel was the, I'm on the executive committee, and I thought that it was councillor Chapel who was the delegate for the Sydney Coastal Councils. And I'm just wondering whether the D has been put into the wrong column. No, no offence to you councillor Burst, but I hadn't heard that there'd been a change. And because I've been on that committee for such a long time, I guess. So have you decided? So I think there must have been a typo with that one, and it's tricky when we're moving the different things.
Sorry, through you councillor Nielsen, I'm going to refer that to the general manager just for clarification, just to record.
Through you, Mr Mayor. You're correct councillor Nielsen. Councillor Chapel was the delegate on that committee. But can I just clarify for councillors that we are not revoting on those committees that were determined at the last, at the last council meeting, which is inclusive of the Sydney Coastal Councils?
Okay, well, what I might suggest is that we will vote on councillor Hamilton's recommendations and then we'll move to councillor Luxford's one and then we'll deal with the rounds around that. Is there any further debate on it, on that particular matter? I will now put councillor Hamilton's amended motion. All those in favour? All those against? I declare that lost. Okay, we can now go to a division. Okay. Mr Kelly? Yes.
Sorry, can we just seek clarification on what we're voting on? I think councillor Sed's just saying that the second line on that...
That's really a typographical one which can be removed. Okay, yep, that's fine. Okay, yes, we can now...
And apologies if I tuned out momentarily and this has already answered. Are we voting to have an extra position on the La Perouse trust? And are we able to do that?
What I will do is refer that through to the relevant officer if you would like.
Through you, Mr Mayor. I haven't read the trust deed lately in regards to that particular trust, but generally they specify a number of members within that trust rules or the trust deed. So I would suggest that the wording allow for us to seek an increase in membership, but that may not be possible. Council will just have to be aware of that.
Could I put it to the mover that we adopt that, seek an extra and come back to, and that come back to council? Yeah. I'm not prepared to give up my spot on that committee either.
Okay, all right, we now have it in front of us. Okay, we'll now go for a division. All those in favour? So, okay, starting with councillor Hamilton? Councillor Pandafini?
I apologise, I had an amendment as well. I'm happy to vote for this, but if we all, if this gets adopted, I won't get a chance to put up the amendment. So I think I need to do that now. Is that correct? Or I can foreshadow?
Depends if you reasonably think...
It's late, I lost track of what's happening, it's 22.
Could I suggest councillor Veitch, you have a good idea as to whether or not this is adopted?
But if it is adopted, I won't have an opportunity to put up an amendment because I had a slight change, not to this part. So is that okay if we just pause for one moment? It's not a long amendment, I promise.
It's fine.
I have sent it through to Mr Kelly. And I also just noted that I had discussed with the mayor that there was proposed a swap for one of the committee memberships that we'd already voted on, that councillor, I am currently chair of the cycling committee, and that councillor Olive was, I would remain as a delegate, but councillor Olive would take the position of chair of the cycling committee. And I think that hasn't been changed. And the other amendments were that we, if we are actually to adopt, if we are actually looking to develop portfolio or establish portfolio committees in line with the strategies, I actually think it would be appropriate to include a housing, a housing portfolio committee. It is literally one of the issues that is of the most interest to many of our residents, and I don't see why that has been excluded. It's a chance to discuss a lot of issues. And the last bit, so all it is is adding an additional portfolio committee, housing, as that we do have a housing strategy, and that seems to have been deliberately omitted. I think there would be plenty of, to discuss in a housing committee, particularly as we're about to adopt the LEP. The second line there is literally not limiting... The second line there is literally not limiting... Do we have a housing portfolio committee? Sorry.
The intention of that is simply to resolve to adopt a housing committee. In the March meeting, we can determine the composition of it. No. If we resolve to adopt this, we will create a housing committee, which will have the following terms of reference as suggested by councillor Veitch. We will determine the composition at the March meeting.
That's correct. And the second line there, there was concerns raised within the Green group that the terms of reference of the portfolio committees would be strictly limited to the details of the existing strategies. This is saying that we don't limit those terms of reference to what is contained in the strategy. There was... Councillor Olive may like to speak to this, if that's okay.
Yeah, I support the idea of having the portfolio advisory committees to be able to discuss four-year programmes and one-year operational plans, other things. But if it's just the, if the terms of reference are just the strategic approaches in the informing strategies, that's very prescriptive and there are plenty of... It's a good base, but there are plenty of opportunities to move across some of these portfolio advisory committees because they're very siloed. We could think of, you know, sort of issues around climate change, which, you know, sort of go to transport and environment or before it was housing. It goes, you know, sort of across, you know, sort of a number of these things. We could think of health, you know, sort of in terms of, you know, sort of housing and greening space and a whole range of things. So if we just, you know, sort of limited it to the terms of reference, what was being dealt with strictly inside those, you know, sort of informing strategies, it seems to me that would be a limitation on, you know, sort of what we might look at as being, you know, a living advisory committee in line with, you know, sort of living strategy.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? Okay, what I might do, just, okay, councillor Hamilton? Well, you can accept councillor Veitch's amendment. Okay, all right, so you accept councillor Veitch's amendment. What I will do, just to clarify what we have in front of us, is the proposal by councillor Hamilton, which incorporates the new planning committee, which will end the proposal that the committees are not strictly limited to the terms of reference. We will determine the planning committee composition in March. But this also includes councillor Burst on the La Perouse Museum Trust. There is a foreshadowed amendment, sorry, there's a foreshadowed motion by councillor Luxford in the event that this fails. Okay, are we all on the same page? I understand it's a bit complicated. Which is the committee list as circulated, which will then give councillor Veitch the opportunity to do that all again. Okay. I'm about to call it. You've closed the debate, unless it's a question.
And just checking, councillor Olive is now listed as the chair of the cycling committee.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, it is a question through the mayor to the general manager. I did ask at the planning weekend if we were going to have a housing committee. What was the reasoning why we don't have a housing committee under the current plan?
Through to the general manager.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The reason that was given in regards to the housing strategy was that housing, the work that's happening in the housing space is going to come to council in large chunks and all councillors should be at the briefings in regards to our LEP and our DCP and those outputs that are coming from that housing strategy. And that was the reason that I was suggesting not to have a housing committee, but to do those briefings in full with the full council, given the importance of it to the local community.
Okay, thank you.
Could I put forward one final amendment, that the housing committee be comprised of any interested councillor?
Okay. Do you accept that councillor Hamilton? Okay. Yep. Okay. I will now put it. All those in favour of councillor Hamilton's amended motion? Okay, all those against? All those against? Okay, I declare that carried. It's fine. It's not clear that we can add councillor Burst to the La Perouse Museum Trust, but we shall go. Doesn't bother me, we will now move to the next item, which I would like to request a procedural item to move to the closed session. Can I have a procedural motion, please? Moved councillor Sedd, seconded councillor D'Souza. Declare that carried.